We'll go ahead and call the Capital City Council Meeting of September 8th to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Vertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Mayor.
Here.
Mayor Botter.
Here. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with a presentation from the Community Action Board. Come on up. We're harmless.
Good evening, buenas tardes. I'm Maria Elena de la Garza and I'm the Executive Director to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County and I'm with our Assistant Director Helen Euan Storey, who has been with the agency for about 14, 15 years. Fifteen years. We want to thank you for allowing us some time on your agenda. It is so critical for us to acknowledge your partnership over so many years with our agency and to thank you for how you help us help the community. Community action has existed in this county for 51 years and I want to take this opportunity to give a shout out to a couple of our board members who are in the audience. Kristin Peterson has been on our board representing the city of Capitola for two years. She has served as a treasurer of the board. She has done an amazing job. She is enthusiastic, passionate, and informed and we're really thrilled to have her as a representative of this community, so I'd like to give a shout out to Kristin.
Thank you.
I'd also like to acknowledge someone who's been in the community for a long time and has been in community action since its inception. He's been on the, serving on the board over many, many decades and he has been an amazing advocate for the people of this community and for the people of this county. And I don't probably even need to mention his name because you could probably guess, but I want to acknowledge Bud Winslow for all his years of service, his dedication, his amazing spirit, his amazing passion, and his fight. As you know, Community Action's mission is to partner with the community to eliminate poverty and create social change and we do that through six programs, essential programs that we offer throughout the county. We have a wonderful PowerPoint and we will, that has, will have a stick to our script because we want to take advantage and give you as much information as we think you need to know in your positions of leadership. So Community Action started in 1965 with President Johnson's Declaration on a War on Poverty. With that, we are a little bit different than other nonprofits in the community. Because we were born at, in that time, we have some requirements that other nonprofits may not have. One is we have a tripartite board, which is made up of 15 members. Five of those members are low-income voices from the community, five of those members are elected officials or their appointees, and five of those members represent industry or needs in the community. So for example, we've had an immigration lawyer on our board, we have the CEO of a credit union on our board, we have, our board just voted to create a new, a new, a seat designation for a farm worker voice on our board, and we also have a day worker center, a day worker voice on our board. And so you can imagine that with that kind of board strength, there are many conversations, many plans, many action items that propel our agency forward and really bring the converse, real conversations in the room about how poverty impacts our community and what can we do about poverty in our community. We also every two years hold poverty hearings. We're required to do that as a community action agency. We're connected to a nationwide network and every two years we go out in the community and we ask the question, what does poverty look like in our community? What is poverty, how are we impacted by poverty? How have the faces stayed the same? How have the faces changed? We've just launched conversations about our next planning process to create a community action plan in response to those poverty hearings, which will be launched in January. But I'll tell you that some of the conversations now led by the board have been, how do we get more robust information? How do we ensure that those voices are being heard? How do we reach out? How do we become part and engage with the community that we need to engage with? And so there's many creative conversations happening right now and really exploring a way of creating not only a centered community action plan for our services, but a community-wide action plan to address poverty. Our services focus in four areas: homelessness prevention and essential services, immigration, legal assistance, and citizenship services; community building and youth development; employment and reentry services. I will tell you that we are one of two agencies that offer homelessness eviction prevention and there's not many of us doing that in this county. I will tell you that we are the only agency in our county who offer legal immigration services. Our director is Doug Keegan, who is an immigration attorney. We have two staff that have just recently, last year, been certified by the Immigration Appeals System so that we can provide high quality and continue to provide high quality immigration services. Of the seven, we serve 10,000, a little over 10,000 community members per year throughout our six programs of our, through our immigration project, we serve 7,000 people a year. It tells you, it speaks to what is a real need in our county. So we have six of our programs. The Santa Cruz Immigration Project is one of those programs. Alcanza is our employment service where we focus on providing job skill support and job placement for youth, for folks on CalWorks, and for the reentry community. We've got a lot of press recently for our Gels to Jobs program where we're linking people who are at Roundtree with employers. We're building our employer database with folks who are second chance employers and working to help provide support and make, provide a bridge for our reentry community to help them be successful once they're back with us. We provide, we just celebrated three years at the Day Worker Center and day workers are those folks who stand, may stand in front of Orchard Supply or Home Depot looking for day labor. And we are not an employment service, we are an employment matching service where we recruit for possible employers and we work with the Day Worker Center community and again, build a bridge and help them get to work. The one eligibility requirement that we request at the Day Worker Center is that folks come through the doors ready to work. And that means a variety of things for different people. One, to, you know, maybe have the right shoes, have the right attire, maybe have the right equipment or access to the right equipment, or we provide equipment and we help train on that equipment. We ask for people to bring your lunch and we have some snacks available, but we ask that part of work ready means if we get a call and there's a match, you're ready to go. And right now, we have over 400 day workers registered. We job match, last month, we were a little bit over 350 job matches a month. And so we're very excited about the work and the community support that that service has attained in the county. We're at the northernmost, excuse me, the northernmost point at the Davenport Resource Service Center where we provided, we're the only service provider there. We work with youth, we work with seniors, and we distribute 6,000 pounds of food to the farm workers and their families on a monthly basis. Sometimes people don't know that there are 11 ranchos out there with families that live and work picking the fields. And so our job is to ensure that they get food, that they get support services, that they get case management to support their thrive, their thriving and their access to and navigation of services. And then we also provide CalWorks Emergency Payment Program and that's a partnership with the county where we respond to folks who are on CalWorks if they have a crisis situation. So for example, if their car breaks down, if they need childcare, if they need to pay for their books at Cabrillo or at a school or at a vocational training program, their county support specialist approves their request and CAB's responsibility is to make sure that those resources get to the people they need, sometimes within five minutes of the request and the approval. It's that quick. People get help when they need it. And our last program, our sixth program, is the Rental Assistance Program and I'm going to turn it over to Helen, who's going to share a little more details about that program.
And I am not, as the previous slide showed, Lourdes Ariano Perez. Unfortunately, our program coordinator for our rental assistance project is ill today. But we came in and saw you briefly and I introduced her a couple meetings ago and she's been with us as the coordinator for about a year now. And our focus in terms of the Rental Assistance Program, and just to kind of say this again because I know there was, I think Jacque you were missing last time, I just want to say that after 30 years of being the shelter project, we have come up with a name change and to be the Rental Assistance Program. And it really speaks to directly being identifiable to the community about what we do these days, our focus, which is really prevention oriented. We want to try to prevent homelessness in the work that we do. So that's really our major focus. We do have a very small program still that's motel vouchers for currently homeless individuals who are recovering from medical crises and it's by referral from medical providers like the Homeless Persons Health Project or Dignity and others. So it's a very small program by referral, but the 90% of the work that we do is focused on prevention, homelessness prevention through our Rental Assistance Program. So as you can see on this line, I mean, what we really focus on is providing rental assistance to avoid eviction and in the city of Capitola through, through your direction, it's also a mortgage assistance for qualifying families. But it's really focusing on low-income families, families with children, those who are 60 years of age or older and/or disabled. So really trying to provide service and support for those that are really the most vulnerable in our community. And so in the last year, we served 93 families with eviction prevention services. For the Capitola Emergency Rental Mortgage Assistance Program, that's a specific contract that we have with you and it's about $25,000. And so 9%, almost 10% of those we serve through our Rental Assistance Program are Capitola residents. That was eight families that were assisted last year, all throughout the city. You know, when I looked at our spreadsheet, you know, it's all the way from the 41st Avenue Corridor, Bay, Park, the Jewel Box, you know, we're assisting people all throughout the city with essential services. And what's really exciting, I think, about this assistance is that after, six months after assistance, so we look at people three months after, six months, and then we're still collecting information at a year after. You know, two-thirds of those folks that we help are still housed after six months. And I think in this community and in this county, with the rental market that we have, that's a really, it's a strong number and we feel good about that kind of retention rate. That retention rate is really bolstered by the case management support that we provide through our case managers. That's been really augmented this year through our Miracor California Volunteers Grant that we got. And we have 14 members in the community right now that are providing financial literacy assistance and employment readiness assistance, including to our Rental Assistance Program participants. So it really strengthens that kind of support in addition to the financial support, that sort of longer-term self-sufficiency support that we give to the families. The last thing I want to say is, and Lourdes would have shared this if she were here, is just an example of a family that we assisted in the city of Capitola this last year. And, you know, it was a father who was recently widowed. The wife passed away, they had three children, and he was struggling because, you know, she had provided the primary care for the kids. And so he came to us in a real, you know, state of grief and crisis and we were able to assist him and keep him in housing, keep that family intact at a time that was so critical in their family for stability. So that's just one example of the kind of work that we're doing in this community with your support and so we really thank you for that. I know we're probably close to the end of our time here. As you can see on our next slide, it just talks about, you know, that we are very thankful for that support and our partnership in the community and the work that we can do together to, you know, keep our most vulnerable residents safe and housed in this community. And it has our contact information there and of course, our website and we're on all the major social media sites as everybody is these days. So we really greatly thank you and I think we would entertain any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for that thorough and very informational presentation. It was, it was really, it was good to hear, so thank you for that. Does anybody have questions or comments? Jacque, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Programs sound just very exciting and definitely a great part of the community helps us keep where we are. But one program stood out and you said second chance employers. So I, you know, I think of that as something we really need a lot more of and I was wondering if either you could comment how you develop second chance employers? How do you find out who they are and maybe aid them in doing that job?
I can speak a little bit to that. Thank you for your question. We're part of a partnership under, with a United Way that started with education of the community and so there were some, some workshops and some town hall meetings to talk about reentry needs and reentry strategies for success and employment, of course, was one of them. There's been conversations led by the United Way with the different chambers and the different business folks and some of, and us as partners and other partners in the community to discuss the needs in the community and the fears and the questions and really trying to understand, you know, what an employer or a business might need, what information they might need to know in order to support the strategy. There was a forum, I believe, a couple of months ago with the business community and specifically targeting HR specialists. This is what you need to know. Here's the risks, here's the law, here's why this is important, here's best practices around it in other communities. I mean, so it really focused, Councilman, on educating the business community and so that is where we are in the strategy and in the movement in this county and it's exciting with, there are folks who are already on board and, you know, said, sign me up and yeah, I get it and I want to do this. And we still have work to do and outreach to do and education to do.
Dennis?
Thank you for the work that CAB does in our community. This is, this question's a little sensitive, but I think the public needs to know this is that, is that do all of your clients, are they legally in the country?
That's a good question. Our programs, we have an intake form, we don't ask that question for many of our programs. And unless I'm incorrect in saying that, it's about poverty and the impacts of poverty in this community and that's why we exist.
So you don't ask the applicant whether they're, are you legally? Okay.
Thank you very much for coming and making that presentation. We really appreciate it. Thank you. it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we had no closed sessions, so there'll be no report out on closed session. See, Clerk, do we have any additional materials?
Yes, we have two additional materials for, they're both for 9C, the zoning code update.
Okay. All right, this is the part of the meeting where we open up the podium to public comment. Anyone from the public can come address us for a period of up to three minutes on something that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come up and address the council? Mr. Graves?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some months ago, I was approached by members of the business community in Capitola Village. And I took their request directly to your staff member that it most closely is aligned with. And it is the need for a sign on the restrooms on the Espinade Park. And he assured me tonight that it's in the works, but, you know, that was three months ago, and it doesn't seem that long to build a sign, really. But maybe we'll have one up before next year's tourist season, because certainly all of us here in town know that there are restrooms there. But with all the happenings in the park, sometimes the idea of restrooms being there at all is obscured to the tourist. Thank you for your time.
I've got a question for you, Ron. Are you talking specifically about a directional sign into the street?
No. You know where the kiosk is for the washing of the suits off and the people off?
Yes.
Directly on that fascia of the restrooms that faces the Espinade, there needs to be a sign just addressing it as restrooms? The request came from several of the merchants in the village. I can name them for you if you'd like.
No, no, I just want to know what we're looking for.
They're getting inundated in the summertime with people using their restrooms when we have some that are not being that heavily used. Thank you.
Just to follow up, I personally have spoken with Britannia Arms, and what they were requesting was an indicator sign from the street into there so that people would not come in and ask.
They were one of three that made the request.
Okay, good.
When I talked to all three of them, the consensus seemed to be that the fascia sign up on that triangle up there would serve more than a directional sign where somebody had to walk right in front of it to see it.
I can assure you, we're going to look into that. Thanks, Ron. Mrs. City Manager, look into that for us?
Yeah, I confirm we are. I know that the proposal was developed, and my Public Works Director's nodding that we are working on that and will have a sign.
That's how the system works. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to come up and address us? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, move on to city council comments.
Next week on Monday, the 12th, the Friends of the SoCal Cemetery is meeting. So, if there's anyone interested in that, it's going to be here in Capitola City Chambers. The situation is that it was owned by a private party, and it was in great disrepair for years and years and years. And I really consider it Capitola Cemetery also, because a lot of our former residents are there or will be there because they have bought plots there. So, the good news is that after the fellow got into financial trouble and the property was for sale for the taxes, the temple bought it. And so, now they're regrouping to see how they're going to manage it and own it and run it and so forth. And they're looking forward, I think, to any help and support that they can get. So, if anyone's interested in that, please come to our meeting at 5:15 Monday, the 12th, or they can contact me. And the Friends of the Library is having another meeting on Saturday, September 17th, from 9:30 to 11:00. It's going to be a very important meeting to talk about a whole lot of interesting things. So, if people are interested in joining the Friends of the Library or just coming to the library meeting to see what's going on and talk about how they can help support the library when it's built, please come to that meeting. Thank you.
This Friday night at dusk, Night at the Museum is showing at Espinade Park, one of our free movie program, second or third movie of the year. There'll be free more. I had the pleasure of doing something that I always enjoy doing. That's riding along with police officers on Friday night. And I want to thank the chief for building a police department that is second to none, as far as I'm concerned. They are active and proactive in policing the community while still paying careful attention to social justice and being respectful to everyone, from the shop owner that calls them to the homeless person sleeping in a doorway. It was, it's always good to see. And on that note, and I'm sorry that the CAB people are not here anymore, but let me tell you that this is not a problem that's just going to get better on its own and go away, and certainly not the mental health aspect of it. And it is heartbreaking. Go out with the police sometime and spend a shift and stand with these people that they approach and talk to. And we have not done a good job, and we're paying the price right now. And I know the chief is involved in some diversion programs where we don't just put people in jail. You know, that's the direct line. It doesn't happen that way anymore. And we're working more and more towards different solutions because we know the other solutions haven't worked for us.
And I'll get you a copy, all of us a copy of a report that came out a couple months ago that said that one in five persons has a mental health issue, which explains a lot.
Well, there are five of us up here. Can we take a vote on that?
It's obviously true. Okay.
I mean, it's much more.
Someone was going to say that. I thought I'd say it first.
Well, my point is, it's much more common than we think. But if you look around at social issues and societal issues and so forth, there's a lot of mental health issues out there. And we're starting to recognize them. We're starting to provide more treatment. And we just need to continue along that line so that people are healthy and stable and going to be productive members of society rather than causing problems.
Capitola is not insulated. I mean, just because you look around, and it doesn't look like other communities, does not mean that the problem doesn't exist. There are no walls around Capitola. So, this is a societal problem, and we have to address it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dennis?
You know, I'm, I'm going to be going out this Friday. It'll be my third or fourth ride. And I have to admit, I'm learning a lot about the police department. And one of the reasons why is because I realize how difficult a job it's going to be to replace our chief. And so, I'm trying to get a better idea of how the force here views the problems that Capitola has, which we do, and what kind of leader they look forward to in the future. We're talking about mental health. One of the things that became obvious to me, which just fills me with deep sadness, is the fact that we have a lot of domestic violence in this town. And two of the three that I've already been on, I was witnessing some of the results of that. A lot of grief for kids in particular. A lot of people forget that when they're having problems with their spouse. And so, I've seen some of the kids being very traumatized. Another reason why I'd like to bring this up is because it's our nonprofit agencies in this county that often provide these services that come in and help our communities. And I'm very proud to be in Capitola, a city that greatly supports the nonprofit agencies. And domestic violence is one of the ones that's addressed. Thank you.
Thanks. I just want to share one story. I was fortunate this past weekend to be selected as a judge for our annual Begonia Festival. And I just want to take my hat off to everyone that built a float, everybody that came down and participated. We started the year with the warning that there wasn't going to be enough flowers to make floats, yet we fielded eight floats this year. I thought the quality of the floats was one of the best I'd ever seen. People came out. The weather was great. It, I personally believe this is Capitola's own personal signature event. And it was just a great time for Capitolas to be proud and make sure that if you want your friends to experience how great of a town this is, invite them next year to come down for the Begonia Festival. Thanks. City Treasurer, any comments?
No comment.
Staff?
Just very quickly, yesterday, the Library Advisory Committee took a tour of some nearby libraries over the hill. We visited the Scotts Valley Library, Los Gatos Library, as well as the Pearl Library in San Jose and the Northside Library in Santa Clara. Really great eye-opening experience, I think, for all of us to see the possibilities with the new modern library. Got a lot of people very excited. And as you know, tonight on your agenda, you'll have the item for you this evening will be to authorize the issuance of an RFP to begin our design process. So, there's a lot of excitement on staff and on the committee level to get the process going.
Okay, great. With that, that takes us to the consent calendar. These are items we usually approve all in one motion, routine business in the city. Is there anyone who would like to pull anything from the consent calendar? I'll take a motion for the consent.
Move the consent.
Second.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on the consent calendar? Seeing none, bring it back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a question? Steve, do you have a question?
Absolutely.
Regarding the tennis courts, which is one of our.
On the consent, sure.
Steve, can you, can you tell me what the policy is about the lights being on or off on the tennis courts?
I'll have to check on that and make sure I'm right. It's been a while. But I believe they, there's a timer, so you can start them, and then however long you set. But after 10 o'clock, they're not supposed to be able to turn them on again.
I just see a lot of times I'm going by there late in the evening, and they're on it with nobody out there, and I don't know.
Steve, we were locking up the bathrooms there at about 11:30, and they were on.
Okay. I'll have to check on that and make sure the timer's working.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that takes us to the General Government Public Hearing. This is a consideration of the Public Works Director to issue a request for qualifications for architectural design services for the Capitola Branch Library.
It's a real short item, just to kind of give you an update on our library project. City Manager already gave you a short update of what went on yesterday. So, as you remember, we have an initial contract with Bogart Construction to provide project management services. So far, they've completed a project delivery method analysis is how we want to bid the project and design the project. And they organized and led the library tour that we had yesterday, which was very exciting to go on. They're currently working on the consultant selection, the architect, which is what's before you tonight, and the preliminary budget and schedule. Our next step that we'll be working on is to hire the project architect, really kick off getting some design ideas going, and public hearings or public meetings on that. And then, we'll complete the preliminary budget schedule. So, I just wanted to go over really quickly the selection of the architect schedule. We're all scheduled to release the RFQ tomorrow. Proposals will be due on October 7th, and we'll conduct interviews. And with a selected firm, we'll negotiate a contract and hope to bring that back to you on November 10th. And with that, I'd like to take a moment to introduce Dave Tanza with Bogart Construction. He is going to be our lead staff on putting this whole project together and keeping all the balls in the air. So, David, would you like to quick introduce yourself?
Good evening. Thank you. My job is to represent you and make sure we get a great library. I've been involved in a number of libraries around Santa Cruz, and I think it's exciting. Capitola has the opportunity to do a fantastic library. It's a great site, and I look forward to working with all of you.
You will become our most familiar faces, what you're telling us?
Hopefully, good news only.
Okay, good. All right, any questions?
Question? Will you be pre-qualifying the architects or just putting it out there to the architectural, globally, the architectural world?
I gave the city a list of architects that do this type of work.
Great.
That will get focused, you know, because of Public Works, it'll get advertised, and people have to look for it. But the good firms will get letters.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Questions?
Is Pam on that list?
Yes.
Of course. She was one of the libraries, the Pearl Library is one of the libraries that she was there for the tour. And we were able to meet architects. They actually did the libraries and questioned them. And it was very educational, and there was a lot of library envy going on yesterday, let me tell you.
And you didn't make it to Los Gatos.
I know. I was told that it is the temple of libraries, and I will make a special trip over there next Friday.
Other questions? Thank you for that presentation. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address or ask questions regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for recommendation. I'll move the staff recommendation. There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item B, is a Consider a Resolution Supporting Proposition 67, a statewide plastic bag ban.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is on your agenda based on a question Councilmember Norton. Essentially, Proposition 67 would ratify Senate Bill 270, which was a statewide plastic bag ban that was passed by the Assembly and signed by the governor in 2014. The opponents to the bill were able to generate enough signatures to put it on the ballot, so it would be on the ballot. So, a yes vote on Proposition 67 would ratify Senate Bill 270, as I mentioned, which would be a statewide plastic bag ban and require jurisdictions to charge a 10-cent fee for the paper bags. Neither situation would affect Capitola, as we already have our own local ordinance, but it would implement the statewide law. Available for questions if there's any question?
Jamie, does that mean even if it fails, we still can enact it locally?
If the measure passes or it fails, it doesn't affect our local ordinance.
And it doesn't, doesn't force us to drop our bags down to 10 cents as opposed to 25. We still stand alone.
We stand. Our ordinance stands as it was adopted prior to 2014. The passage of this would implement this uniform program in other areas of the state. The failure of this wouldn't change our ordinance, but it wouldn't implement ordinance throughout the state.
We would just be viewed as pioneers in this effort.
We would just be pioneers, yes, along with, I think.
Fire foam pioneers and.
Yes.
Universal pioneers.
Universal pioneers.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for recommendation.
I'll move, I'll move, want to move approval?
Oh, you go ahead.
I'll move approval and also just add that we CC Senator Manning also, please.
Well, do it. That's it. Second?
I'll say, I have, I just have a comment on this.
Go ahead.
After reading Lourdes and the high points there.
Go ahead.
I think the plastic bag ordinance, the industry wrote half of this right here. They have a, in here, they have a $2 million kickback to the plastic manufacturers to readjust to them taking plastic bags out. How absurd is that? Okay, the other part of it is, is that, that the ballot measure would require stores to deposit their bags, bag sale proceeds into a special fund administered by the Wildlife Conservation Board. And that's one of 100 agencies that could use that money, a wildlife conservation board. Have we ever dealt with that agency in this, in this, in this community? Probably not.
So, what you're, that second piece you're talking about is actually Prop 65? So, there's two plastic bag propositions on. The first is Prop 67, which would ratify SB 270. The second was an initiative that was sponsored by the plastics industry and would require, and SB 270 would allow, as our ordinance does, the grocers to retain the fee for the takeout bags. SB 65 was put on by the plastics industry to require that those funds be given to the Wildlife Board. I'm blanking on the name. And it was. Wildlife Conservation. Reading the argument against it, the supposition is, is that by putting two measures on that are similar, it would serve to conflate the issues and potentially allow the bag ban to be overturned.
What happens if they both pass?
If they both pass, what would happen then is that there would be a statewide plastic bag ban, and this, what's it called, the World Wildlife Board or something?
Yes.
Would get approximately $20 million a year to use to reduce the impacts.
Would the plastic bag industry also receive funding, the funding that is listed?
They would get a $2 million. Apparently, the original SB 270, I think, I'm guessing at this point, but my supposition is, is that to try to offset the impacts that the plastic bag manufacturers were talking about from the impacts of 270, they said that they would lose jobs and those sorts of things. So, the bill does provide $2 million in funding to offset the job losses that potentially could be incurred in the plastics industry if it passed.
So, we're recommending to the public, as this board, that we support Proposition 67.
Proposition 67.
We're not even mentioning 65 at all.
Yeah.
We should have brought that up.
We should have brought that up.
Just educate people.
Sure. I mean, I'm happy to bring up 65. I guess 65 is more controversial in the sense that it was put on by the plastics industry to, you know, according to the opponents of it, to conflate the issues. So.
The public should know that.
Is that a request to put 65 on the agenda for our next meeting?
Jamie, I'm mixing the two here with the reading. I'm mixing the two. So, if we could, we could bring this back and make it real clear what 65 and 67 and what.
I think we can just put it on the agenda to deal with 65 next time, and we'll make a motion on 67 tonight.
And what would be the, would be opposing or supporting 65?
Opposing.
I think we need to do a little research on the opposition of a measure by the city council.
Yeah.
We have come in favor of many, and we have resisted coming out in favor of some. I don't recall ever us coming out opposing a particular proposition, and it would do well to get some history.
We did when there was a measure to do away with rent control. We, that was a statewide ballot measure that failed luckily, but we took a position against that. measure that failed luckily, but we took a position against that. There were a couple of times we've done it.
Well, I think the reason for the public hearing is we can have a discussion about how we want to support that, and staff's going to make a recommendation.
Sure. Prop 65 is a little bit more complicated because on the face of it, it would provide funding for presumably a good entity. I don't know much about them, but-
We could learn more about it.
We could learn more about it.
I'm firmly in favor of this particular motion, second. I'm on the fence of the other one because I just don't know enough about it, so.
Okay.
It might be a great discussion.
Prop 65 will be brought back in that context and with more information about it.
Okay. I'm going to call the vote on Prop 67 and our support. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and we have for the next meeting, Prop 65. That should swing the election. That takes us to the highlight of the evening, the Village Parking Zoning Code Update and In-Lu Parking Fee Policy. Presentation by Ms. Catan?
Yes. Thank you, councilor. We're here for the zoning code update, and specifically, we'll be speaking about the parking related to the village. And to start the conversation, we've got this great clip from the museum to take us back to the 1950s.
Here's Capitola in the summertime. There's still lots of lines and lines of cars, old 1955 cars. There goes the elephant train, see it? Running up the street again and across from that, the old garage that was there across the street that's gone now, it's a grocery store. That was Lee Guttermann's garage. This is Capitola Avenue. Right now, these cars are coming down. When the saber burned, it also burned the-
So we'll stop that there, but just wanted to show you a little traffic clip from summertime in Capitola. And since that video, let's see here, was taken, there have been drastic improvements throughout the village and with our current parking situation in Capitola with improvements of over 500 parking spaces in city parking lots, new parking, managed parking permit districts throughout our residential neighborhoods, also managed parking throughout the village and metered parking. So a lot of improvements over the years, and when you look at our, the coastal, the LCP and what our to-do items are on that list, a lot of them have been accomplished over the years in terms of parking within the village. But we still do have a beach that attracts a lot of people and a great village that attracts a lot of people, so we're here tonight to continue talking about parking in the village as an attractive place. It's, people are coming in and they're coming with their cars. So tonight, two things we're going to talk about are the key revisions in the draft code so far to date with the Planning Commission, and also we're going to look at the In-Lu parking policy and talk about possibility of updating that In-Lu parking policy. So some of the key revisions in the draft code, I'll have a slide on each of these, but the six-seat rule for to-go restaurants, also expansions within existing businesses in the village, In-Lu parking, also valet parking, and then shared parking studies and parklets. So these are some of the changes that are occurring within the draft code. First, takeout food and beverages. Currently, there's a rule that takeout food services and beverages can have up to six seats. This is kind of a nightmare for us to regulate and keep an eye on because there always seems to be seats creeping into these facilities. So under the new rule that the Planning Commission came up with, they said, "Let's have up to 300 square feet of area within one of these to-go takeout food and beverages that's accessible to the public." So they wouldn't count the kitchen area or any area that's not available to the public, but if the square footage accessible to the public is 300 feet or less, it can be classified as a takeout food and beverage and keep the one space per 240 square feet parking requirement. So that's an improvement within the draft code. Other changes that have been made, as we went through the code, all of their zoning districts, you'll see on the right-hand side, the requirements for parking are a lot less stringent under other zoning districts. When we went to the Parking and Circulation Committee to talk about, Parking and Traffic Committee to talk about the updated zoning code, we heard from that committee that we really shouldn't change too many of the regulations in the village. And that message was shared with the Planning Commission as well, and so when we came back, you'll see the village standards have basically stayed the same for retail, food services, and also hotels. Minor tweaks is that within the restaurants, and the area in yellows for the village, within the restaurants, there's a new allowance that in dining, we have one space per 60 square feet of dining area, but a new allowance of one space per 240 for all the back-of-house operations such as the kitchen space and restrooms. Also, within this, hotels with 20 or more rooms, these will be determined by a parking demand study that will be done by the city, so that's two changes that have occurred within the city-village, the village when it comes to parking calculations. Expansions and enlargements of non-residential uses. So currently, anytime you expand a non-residential use, you're required to provide parking for that incremental change between the existing, what's existing and what's been expanded. Under the new code, when the Planning Commission put a lot of time into this one, they wanted to support our local businesses and provide an opportunity for them to expand to up to 20% of their existing floor area without having to provide additional parking. So that is one change that you'll see within the draft code. This expansion of up to 20%, it would not be in addition to the building. It would have to be within the existing building footprint or utilized for outdoor dining. So here are a couple examples. On the left is Caruso's, and the expansion could occur into the Mercantile under this allowance. There's several examples throughout the city in which a restaurant could expand their 20% within the building footprint. And then also the idea of outdoor dining. So for establishments that don't have outdoor dining, that would typically trigger more parking. They could utilize this 20% provision to create an outdoor dining space. Next is, there's a new section within the code that's applicable citywide for onsite parking alternatives, and this section of code was limited in the village. So as you can see where the X's are, they're not allowed within the village. So within the village, for onsite parking alternatives, there's the In-Lu parking program and also valet parking. Not applicable to the village is low-demand studies. So if you have a use that does not create as much demand, we can do a low-demand study. That would not be applicable to the village. A transportation demand management plan is not allowed in the village, and also shared parking. Shared parking studies. So that would be if a multi-use building, the allowance to have a shared parking study to decrease the amount of parking that's required. And here, again, mixed-use parking study. Currently, if you're a mixed-use facility, you're allowed to, the city will take in money and will do a parking study to see if there's adequate onsite parking when there's a change of use. This happens regularly at Kings Plaza because it's so large and the multi-use overlap. Within the zoning code update, the Planning Commission direction was to, will allow the mixed-use parking studies in all other places, but it's prohibited in the village. The one exception is for a new village hotel. In that scenario, we would be looking at a transportation demand parking analysis and a study on what's proposed. In-Lu parking, currently, we have a policy. We'll be getting into further discussion on the policy this evening, but the policy is applicable to large hotels in the village that have valet parking. Within the new code, we've added a section for In-Lu parking. It is now listed as it applies to non-residential uses in the village. After this evening's conversation and the direction from the city council, we'll be updating this section of the code to clarify what is applicable under the In-Lu parking based on either the update of the policy or adding the direct language into the code. Another change that occurred is parklets were added to the, were in the draft code. This was not within the parking section. It's within the supplemental regulations section. So the section where we have a lot of the temporary uses and seasonal standards. So for parklets, they were allowed, it was drafted to be allowed in the village only. One outdoor dining area per restaurant, so if a restaurant currently has a dining area, they would not be able to apply for a parklet, and a parklet could only take up a maximum of two parking spaces. So a parklet is like an outdoor dining deck that would be situated on parking spaces to create more outdoor dining within the village.
Can you repeat that again? As you said, if they already have a dining area, they're not allowed to have a parklet?
They, within the draft code, how it was written, you would not be able to apply for a parklet.
If you have dining-
If you have a dining area, so.
So Caruso's couldn't play?
No, because they have a dining, I mean, I'm trying to figure out who, except for Taqueria that has just takeout, but who could apply for this? I don't know of a restaurant-
Oh, if they, I'm sorry, if they already have an outdoor dining area.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. I think we all heard the same thing.
Only Pizza My Heart.
That's alright. Okay, good. Thank you.
So only if they have an outdoor dining area. The permitting process is you would, they would have to apply for a conditional use permit that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and an encroachment permit by the city council to utilize the parking spaces. So this is a map of the village I tried to put together where I thought parklets could possibly occur. So taking into account the amount of restaurants that already have dining areas, I put one line in front of Pizza My Heart, but then the other yellow is areas in front of existing restaurants that do not have parking. So the majority of them would be on Monterey and San Jose with a couple-
Those that don't have outdoor.
Those that do not have-
And like the deck behind Paradise or Margaritaville would-
Would count as their outdoor.
As would Stockton Bridge, which has an outdoor seating area?
Correct.
Okay, I'm getting the rhythm now.
Outdoors, outdoor.
Does the Rocks of Petra have a use permit for the tables outside there? We can look into that later.
They do. They have outdoor seating.
Outdoor dining.
Yeah, okay. And dining, okay. And of course, this map could change based on new location of new restaurants, but this is under current conditions. When this went to Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommendation was to remove the allowance for parklets. So that has been redlined and crossed out within the supplemental regulations, and that's within Section 17.96 of your draft code that you have. So we thought it would be appropriate to put in the slideshow as it pertains to the village, though. So when Planning Commission, after reviewing the zoning code and making a lot of great suggestions on improvements to the flow of the zoning code and the suggestions that you've seen in the previous slides, we had a pretty in-depth conversation about, there was a sentiment that we hadn't really addressed the issue of parking within the village, that there's currently, the way in which parking is calculated is based on phantom parking, was the term that came up, and if there really isn't onsite parking, they asked, "Why do we require it? And why not look at other approaches to see if we could treat the village as a district?" And the example that was given by Commissioner Newman was that the village is similar to an amusement park, and when you go to an amusement park, you're really going to an overall experience. And in that, there's restaurants and there's different rides, but if you were to expand one restaurant, would it really have that much of an impact on who's parking in the main parking lot at the amusement park? So with that example, we did look at other options of district parking and brought forth other suggestions to them and had a great conversation on what other options could be utilized. And in the end, they said, "You know, we'd really like to go back to city council and get further direction on whether or not we should be utilizing the standards that have been practiced, or should we really look at this phantom parking that exists and take a different approach." The approach that is there today does help with managing growth in the village in terms that you cannot intensify a use without providing parking. And it's also tied, the reason why we do have the approach that's in there currently is because our current LCP, the Local Coastal Plan, Land Use Plan, we have relevant policies that must be followed. And so one of our policies for parking in the village is that the intensity of new development is limited to the availability of parking and alternative transportation systems. So the second implementation was to require parking for new users, such parking is to be provided at sites outside the village area within walking distance or remote, or served by a shuttle system. So within these two land use policies, this goes back to the why our parking calculation is set up the way it is, and why we don't allow businesses to just intensify without providing parking, and why we don't have a district approach in the village. In order to take a district approach in the village, we'd have to change the land use plan and the LCP to mirror that, and would probably be problematic as we go through the update with the Coastal Commission, so. Little overview. Next, with working with the Planning Commission, there was also frustration that the zoning code is drafted, the minor tweaks are not really solving the larger parking problem. And as we saw in the video, the parking problem's been around for a while in traffic, and supply is the main problem. When we're looking to solve the supply issue, that comes back to funding. So one thing that has been addressed within the zoning code update is, which is appropriately in the zoning code update now, is the In-Lu parking fees. Other means in which to provide funding don't typically, they wouldn't fall within your zoning code, and those, I have a list here of like raising the rates for the parking meters, we could look at new taxes, we could look at an improvement district for the village. There are a lot of other ways to get there, but typically you wouldn't find those in your zoning code. So now, after the discussion on the zoning code update, I'd like to jump into the In-Lu policy. So in 2013, admin policy I-33 was adopted. It's applicable to large hotels with valet service. There's currently 57 spaces in the beach and village parking lot that are available for the In-Lu parking program. I've listed a lot of the program details on this slide. The request must be approved by the city council. The cost is determined by the city council at the time of application. There's options in which to make those payments, and then the revenue must be deposited into an exclusive parking trust fund, and the applicant is responsible for securing, monitoring, and enforcement of the provided spaces, purchased spaces. So tonight, we're looking for direction on two items, the In-Lu parking and the zoning code update relative to the central village. So within the In-Lu parking fee program, the options are to retain the policy as it is today. We could tighten the policy or expand the policy for other uses, parklets, et cetera. And also, within the zoning code update, in the village, we can continue with the draft changes as they are, or initiate a separate village parking strategy to look at the overall village and study it further, have more public outreach, and then look at other solutions to the current problem. With that, staff would suggest continuing with the draft changes that have been made to date. We feel they're an improvement to the code that exists, and if we were to initiate a separate village parking strategy, that hopefully we could do that once the zoning code is adopted, or is at least past the point of that we have full recommendations and it's into the Coastal Commission before we start further studying it, just not to slow down progress too much, because it will take a lot of time and energy to do that. So we'll start with the In-Lu parking fee program, and then we can go on to the zoning code discussion.
I was just going to ask if we just do one or do them separately? Would that be a good way to proceed and make recommendations?
I believe so.
Be confusing?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That was my hope. Okay. Any questions on this policy?
I have a question for staff. I understand the In-Lu parking fee program that we have with the 57 spaces that we all discussed in the past. Is it the Planning Commission's idea, or is it Planning's idea, to expand that In-Lu program for the rest of the village? Are we talking about that tonight, or as a possibility, or not?
Councilman Termini, this item was brought before the council at the request, I believe, of Councilman Norton. We haven't discussed the option of expanding it with the Planning- We haven't discussed the option of expanding it with the Planning Commission, so this would be the first discussion, but certainly that's something the council's interested in, you could give staff that direction.
And are we talking about an in-lu fee that is above and beyond the fifty-seven spaces?
No.
And, so we're just talking about potentially parsing out those two and three at a time?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item, I think you'll recall probably three meetings ago, Councilmember Norton asked to have the in-lu policy come back, and the response at that time was we would bring it back in the context of the overall zoning code and village parking discussion. So that's why this is here.
So we're not talking about expanding in-lus so that, you know, there's fifty-seven for the hotel, and then we'll take another seventy-five and parse them out and make, you know, two for Margaritaville and three for Baybar and?
I haven't heard that as a proposal.
So we're focusing on the, on the dreaded fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven, but, you know, I, I just, just for clarification, because there is some new information, by my numbers, we really don't have fifty-seven, we actually have fifty-six. Is there any? It seems that we have a shortage from the Coastal Commission of a hundred and seventy-six, and at the latest count, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-two spaces, which would mean that we really don't have fifty-seven, we have fifty-six.
The two-hundred-and-thirty, two-hundred-and-thirty-three was, was wrong?
Right. I think that, that, we'll just go for, for staff can verify this, that the actual number of spots in that lot today as we sit here is two-hundred-and-thirty-two.
That's correct.
And the shortage that was, was forecasted by the coastal plan was one-seventy-six, so when you subtract those numbers, it means that we actually only would have fifty-six. So I just want to be accurate with the number.
That's correct.
Okay. So let's work with fifty-six as a number rather than fifty-seven.
Sure.
Because of what exists. Any other questions?
John?
I'm just curious, of the areas that you've identified as possibilities for parklets, for instance, have we had any inquiries about this? Have any of the merchants come forward and sort of like, I'd like to be first in line, that type of thing?
Not to staff at this point. We've had no direct inquiry asking for a space or to bring it forward.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up to the public. If anybody would like to come and speak on this in-lu parking fee program with regards to retaining it, tightening it, or expanding it, or any, any or all of the above. Hi, Nels.
Hi, how are you, Nels Westman? Um, well, I guess I'm gonna have two opportunities to speak, one's about in-lu and one's about everything else. And my notes aren't exactly prepared that way, so I'm gonna add a little bit. But, you know, the in-lu parking with fifty-six, fifty-seven spaces, whatever it is, these are not surplus spaces. It's not like they sit around and, you know, they're available all the time. I was part of writing the, you know, formulating the policy, and it was absolutely a technique to reserve fifty-seven spaces from the Coastal Commission's inventory of public parking. And it was designed to, to help leverage or forge a public-private partnership with a hotel that would provide major economic and other benefits to the community with a developer who had the economic strength to actually pay the two-something million dollars upfront for the spaces. It would be an operation that had the ability through valet parking or a shuttle parking system to actually move the cars for their guests back and forth and to eliminate all of the in-and-out traffic in the, in the village, and to transfer the hotel's parking requirement to a point outside of the village. This concept now, all of a sudden, of backing off from that and saying, these are fifty-seven surplus spaces that we can play with however we want, parcel them out, one-z, two-z, to somebody who wants to convert the craft gallery to a restaurant, they know the right people to walk it through City Hall, the city's gonna give them a sweetheart deal where they only have to pay no money down, we'll finance it over thirty years, five-hundred dollars a year, we'll take care of collecting the money from whoever operates the next business there. I mean, it's just a nightmare, and it completely erodes what we were trying to accomplish with the in-lu program. And if you go down that road and you give up that long-term, important tool to figuring out what the heck you're gonna do with a hotel property and that sort of thing, to squander it away on little tiny projects, I can't tell you how foolish it is and how short-sighted it is. And I just urge you not to go there, and certainly not to go there unilaterally in something like tagging it onto the zoning ordinance update without a rigorous public process and getting everybody involved. Please do not go there tonight where you're gonna start emasculating a, a policy that was deliberate and well-thought-out back in, I think it was two thousand and thirteen when it was written. This is a dangerous course that you are on now as far as the village parking situation is concerned, so I thank you.
Thanks, Nels. Come on up, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
I'm Bob Edgren, and hello, Mr. Mayor and the council. I just wanted to echo Nels Westman's views because they're, they're mine. This is a situation that, for some reason, I got very attached to years ago. And talk about a well-thought-out and worked-on plan was the in-lu parking program back in the late seventies, eighties, I believe it was. Anybody remember? That was a pretty good program. It afforded the opportunity of businesses to intensify their use, but they had to pay a fee. I want to say it was ten thousand dollars at first, which dropped to eight thousand or seven for two and a half seats in their establishment. Now you may say that's kind of exorbitant, maybe it was. But it allowed businesses to expand, intensify their businesses, okay? And what I would suggest that the council vote on tonight is to kind of table this issue and engage in some history of, kind of take a look at the old in-lu parking program, see if that somehow, or parts of it, can be adopted into what we're doing now. You had mentioned the intensification of use. As far as I know, every time a restaurant adds one seat to their restaurant, that's an intensification of use. But we don't have any counting of, of seats in restaurants. There's none. During the old in-lu parking program, there was. The city had a log of every restaurant and the number of seats. That's how tight things were. And if you wanted to expand your, your business, you paid your seven thousand or ten thousand dollars to do it. Now, what you're talking about is just letting things loose, which may be good, may be bad, but all I'm saying is to take your time. This is a very important issue, and one that will have a lot of bearing years from now. You know, sometimes when you just do something without thinking, really hashing it over, it, it throws people off, whether they're coming into town to build a business or start a business or buy a business. The parking, uh, the parking situation here, trying to get a handle on it, it's, it's been like a greased pig. I mean, it's just been all over the board in the last thirty years. And I, I think it's time to really, okay, this is what we're gonna do, okay? And stay that course. Don't, you know, don't vacate it for a, a matter of maybe a taqueria saying, well, I, I bought my business and I thought I was buying a sit-down restaurant. No, I'm sorry, you should have looked into that. That's, now, I don't know the history particularly about the old in-lu parking program. I can tell you this, that I believe Peter Duers of the Burkington Field approached the Planning Commission with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus check, because he wanted to do some developing there. They turned it down, and shortly thereafter, the program was stopped. In my opinion, that two-hundred-thousand dollars could be gone towards buying something like maybe the building where David Ling is and starting, opening up a restroom. That's just what I'm thinking. And I think if you checked the notes of the city, that's pretty right on, as far as Duers. What else, what else? I have so much information going through my head about parking. And, you know, I've been around here since seventy-four, so I saw the battles, the tough battles between merchants and the, the city over parking. It just, to me, today, two thousand and thirteen, sixteen, is so funny. I can't even get a whole handle on how the thinking process works. There's no accounting anywhere of, of number of parking, or number of seats in restaurants. So anybody could add more seats. It's an intensification, intensification of, of their use, which adds more traffic, which adds more spillovers into the neighborhood of par, people parking. I mean, you know.
Bob, I'm, I'm gonna have you wrap up, okay? Because you're, you can come back and talk again on another topic, but that's, okay? Thank you. Anyone else like to come and talk on this topic? Mr. Graves?
Yes, thank you. It's very hard to separate the in-lu from other village parking, but the in-lu spaces that we're talking about tonight, I know you say it's fifty-six and you need to go back and change that resolution, just don't decree it from the mayor's seat, Mr. Mayor, because it was fifty-seven spaces when we talked about it before. And they aren't magical spaces, they exist today. The idea was very clear in Nels's mind, my mind, and everybody else's mind when they were created. They would be for a larger hotel complex in the village, and they would operate those spaces, they would maintain them, they would govern them, they would basically pay for the spaces as an in-lu fee for not providing parking within the shell of their hotel. So, you know, what you're doing is selling stuff twice. And Mr. Edgren talks about the old in-lu ordinance. I was here when that was in effect, and that was a disaster. We collected funds, but none of it really went to parking. You know, it went other places, in the general fund and other places, and that's a shame. What really concerns me is the Coastal Commission. If we change this now, does that change their number? Do, and I'm gonna just digress because I'll get up on the other part of the ordinance, but parklets really interest me from a Coastal Commission standpoint. Every time you allow a parklet, even in the red ones, and I can think of other businesses down there that the staff either doesn't know about, that are, could have takeout, but just take the one that they pointed out, Pizza My Heart alone, that takes away parking because there is no other place but to put it in the parking area. And that will increase the number of deficient spaces under our present local coastal plan. Be careful what you do with parking in the village. It works now, it's good the way it is. At all the meetings I attended, both the, the sessions that E.L. Ortiz put on at the community room, and at the Planning Commission sessions, and the general plan sessions, the consensus in the village was, if it's not broken, don't try and fix it. We don't need more cars in the village. I think it's right to get them out, and I think it's right to get them out in the way we did it. If a hotel comes along, they have some price to buy some spaces. They're not magical new spaces, wish they were, it isn't happening. Thank you for your time.
Hello, TJ.
Mayor and council members, just real quick, and I, I can't disagree with anybody before me, obviously they have a lot more experience than I do, but just a little thought behind how the Planning Commission got to this point in the discussion was, in the last parking site, it was done in two thousand and eight, one of the recommendations, actually, and there's number two, it says, "Conduct a thorough review of parking zoning standards for the village area in order to identify methods to allow restaurants and retail uses more flexibility to rehabilitate and/or expand their businesses to improve economic development in the village." And at the same time, our new general plan talks about the same thing, about economic development. So the discussion was, nobody really owns parking in the village, other than maybe Duers or, you know, the Swenson property, so are we tying the tan, uh, hands of our community, our businesses in the village, by telling them what they can and can't have as, as far as parking spots? And part of that goes back to that same study where it discusses fifty-three percent of the visitors to Capitola during this busy season come to the beach. They don't come to our restaurants, in fact, only twelve percent it shows goes to our restaurants, twenty-one percent to retail. So what can we do to, one, tie in the general plan of the economic development part, two, meet what the, the parking study says? And part of that, and I, I think Katie actually did a better job than Commissioner Newman of that analogy about this concept of, you know, like a Great America or something like that, where it's a, it's a community here. Whether you're going to the beach to entertain yourself, or going to one of the retail stores or one of our restaurants, it's a shared parking program. So it wasn't trying to make it more difficult here, it was just trying to free up the flexibility for our business people to actually, and I, and I think Mr. Graves is correct, I mean, this in-lu idea goes back to two thousand and one, when it was first mentioned. And every one of these items, these par, parking studies and traffic studies that have been done that I read, talks about collecting fees. And I know those fees have been collected, but in that process, I don't think it's, we've done with the parking fees what we're supposed to do with them, so at least what the recommendation was. And that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Susan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Staff can correct me, and TJ's here because we were at the same Planning Commission meeting, but my recollection of what the Planning Commission ultimately did was, we said that we wanted to go along with the changes that staff has listed for you that were already in the zoning ordinance, but that we felt if we're going to make any other changes, particularly any significant changes that would be allowing new development in the village, that we ought to have some sort of parking study. We ought, we ought to look at it as a whole. And as Katie mentioned, that would be a fairly lengthy process that would take a great deal of time from staff, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. And we've all worked really hard on the zoning ordinance. And I think it's important for this zoning ordinance to keep moving forward, not taking a stop, which would take several months, because if you are going to change parking in the village, there are a number of different groups down there that you need to engage with, find out their opinion, how parking changes would affect them. There are the residents down there, there are the retail businesses, there are the restaurant businesses, we need to coordinate with the Coastal Commission because we don't want to go through a huge effort and then have it just rejected. So my recollection was that the Planning Commission supported the changes that are in the current draft that is before you, but that we were not in favor of making any other significant changes to the parking in the village right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll go and close the comment, bring it back for some discussion. Dennis?
I'd just like to make a statement for the start, if anyone's following what the water district just did, they just declared a water moratorium in this county. They're not, they're not issuing any new permits, they're not taking applications, and you have a water board on there that is a no-growth water board that will hold to that. So a, a question of a hotel in this village, this is gonna happen. So why, why would we be considering to take and suppress businesses or businesses that are in the village? Why would be, why would we be holding possible expansion of those businesses in the, in the village when we have an opportunity to make them, make them survive? Even if there's a hotel that may come forward in this, in, in this process, is, is that from what I'm hearing from the public, there's gonna be half the size of what we've discussed in the past. The other thing is, is that if you put a hotel in the village, you want every car driving down there to service that hotel? No, you don't. That's not good planning. That's not what we should do to our village. We should be requiring that hotel to buy spaces up in Pacifico and expand our parking, our parking structure, just like we have in our general plan. That's already proposed. I think Ed Newman's probably right about the village, looking at the village as a, as a theme park destination. The only difference is, is that we require, we, we allow people to, to drive into our theme park. That's a major difference. We have to look deeper at what we have here. We, this, and I, I think it needs to go more than back to the Planning Commission, I think it has to be a community discussion as, in, in general. The holding, if we're just talking at this point about the fifty-nine spaces, we should open it up to, to everyone to have an equal right to it. The public paid for those, that's fifty-seven spaces. Every person in the public should have a right to use those, but if they have a, a use that's susceptible to the city, not just one developer, or not just two developer. We seem to keep pinning things on, on, on paying for, when we're paying for things to benefit certain people or certain, certain objects. The village, the village, yes, I've always agreed that the hotel would be wonderful in that village. But at the same time, I'm not willing to tie up the rest of the businesses that are down there for the next ten to fifteen and maybe twenty years for someone to see a hotel come in there. And even if there is a hotel in there, I would never favor those people driving into that village, maybe drop-off would be the farthest end. We have to learn that the village is not working the way it is. We cannot tolerate this backup traffic that is in there every single day backing up. It's not good for it. People go there and, and visit there, it's not good for us as a community. The, the way we fix that, and the only way to fix that is- The way we fix that, and the only way to fix that is, is that the path that we're taking and we're suggesting on general plan is to put a second story on that, on this parking lot back here and, and require people to park up here and start closing down sections of that esplanade. And so if those fifty-seven spaces benefit economically to the businesses that are down there, I think we should allow them to, to, to use those.
Stephanie, go ahead.
Well, the way I look at it is, we kind of made a deal, and we ought to stick by our word. And the deal was, save those spaces for a potential developer, whether it's hotel or retail or commercial or mixed use or who knows what. I mean, it's a great location. It's a great site, and something will happen there, and we don't know when. But we kind of made a deal, and I think we should stick to it. If we don't, we're in big trouble, I think, even if somebody wants to come in there and do something. So I agree, we shouldn't wait for twenty years in case Mr. Swinson holds on to it for twenty years. But I think we need to give him the opportunity to follow through with what was our original plan.
John?
Fine. I understand what Bob said about the in-lu program. Looked good on paper. Two things bother me about it. We were selling spaces we didn't have, and no one accounted for the money. Oh, sorry. Once again, we were selling spaces we didn't have, and no one accounted for the money. Same thing that happened when the village master plan committee got together twenty years ago. And I sat there, and we added, oh, forty or fifty meters and did a complex calculation and said, you know, if we do this in ten, fifteen years, we're gonna have a lot of money. Money's gone into the general fund. No one ever saw it. Money was never put away for parking. And it has never been put away for parking. So, let's see, let me get down to in-lu because I have a lot of, we're not ready to talk about parklets yet, are we?
That's in this section. It says here in the bottom, expand policy for types of parkings. So if you had a parklet, okay, conversation it would be now.
My, by my calculation, if we allow parklets, we lose twenty parking spaces. That means we have thirty-six parking spaces left with regard to the coastal commission. I love the idea of parklets. They're really cool, but we're in a zero-sum game here. We, we can't take away a potential twenty parking spaces. I think they'd be picturesque. I think they'd be romantic. I think they'd be nice to have, you know, four or five tables from Caruso's sitting out there instead of cars, but it doesn't realistically pan out. Raising the meter rates, no, because we know where the money goes. Parking improvement district, I don't know enough about it yet, but I know that I've sat up here long enough and I have, both on planning and city council, and approved phantom parking spaces for many, many restaurants that we, no parking spaces ever materialized. We just allowed it by some arcane calculation. So I fully appreciate the amusement park concept. If, if I were to give away any parking spaces, it would be to balance out taking the parking spaces away from around the palm tree and expanding Espinot Park the way our third phase of the village master plan shows. That's nice. I would also, having been caught and been a contributor to the gridlock coming through the village, stop people from turning down the esplanade when it's bumper to bumper and gridlocked from the palm tree all the way back. Doesn't do us any good because people will fill up Stockton waiting for that right turn. And everything stops all the way back up cliff, up Wharf Road. It's ridiculous. If we can't, with the technology we have, and we have it, some way have people know that there are zero parking spaces available in the village. You can't go in there. There aren't any parking spaces available. One more tour through the village is not gonna create a parking space for you, no matter how much you pray to the god of parking. So we can help by eliminating that. We have been, and I'm all in favor of public outreach. We have been outreaching on parking in the village since there's been a village. I have been on almost every, you know, ad hoc and standing committee with regard to the village and parking and congestion, and it always adds up to the same thing, not enough parking spaces. We have two parking lots that fill up now three weekends a year. Car show, Begonia Festival, art and wine. And they get close to filled on many other days, nice weather days. So we're utilizing those parking spaces. It's good. There just aren't enough of them. This last Begonia Festival, those lots were full fast on Sunday morning, and every neighborhood around the village was impacted. There were people parking in permit areas, being told that it was a thirty-five dollar ticket. They considered it. They felt it was a good deal, and they walked into the village. This is what happens. So the in-lu fee, I'm not, I'm not feeling it because I just don't feel the money will go anywhere except the general fund. I'm not willing to slice parking spaces out of it, even though I am very much in favor, when we get to it, we'll talk about it, lightening up on the, on the requirements and going with the planning commission's recommendations to not be astringent. Because I believe there is a lot of shared parking that goes on. When Margaritaville and, and Paradise and Bay Bar and Andy at the Brit are rocking at nine, ten o'clock at night, there are no merchants open. And I also don't want to take away twenty parking spaces because I am still censured to people who still live in the village because we do have residents there. So I'm not, I'm not really bullish on the in-lu parking fee idea, even though I fully appreciate Dennis's thoughts on it. And I think the way we address those thoughts is using the planning commission's recommendations and stepping back a little bit, not being quite astringent and allowing a little bit of, little bit of, twenty percent expansion, perfect. If someone puts another three seats in or four seats, it doesn't necessarily mean another car. Can't think that way all the time. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
John?
In the past, we did not run a program very well. And we're saying that we shouldn't try such a program right now because it's something we didn't do well in the past. That was collecting money for an eventual parking structure and letting those monies get lost because we didn't manage them properly. So I'd just like to state that I think that maybe now, based on our experience, we probably could come up with a means to do that. But I don't think we're there yet. I do appreciate city planning mentioning the idea of a parking district, and I find that attractive because it makes us focus on the problem, and it makes us try to come up with a solution that's coherent. And it makes us also focus on doing it correctly. It's not yet decided, I don't think the community of Capitola has yet decided that we want a parking structure. So to me, that's part of the discussion. The discussion has to be citywide and has to take into account many factors. But that discussion is gonna take some time. And I fully support city planning and our staff's recommendation that we should move ahead on the proposed small changes that are gonna have incremental benefits to the city of Capitola. But I also support the idea of putting this discussion aside and develop it further. Our parking commission might come up with some ideas that would help us out in that regard. Another thing I think the city is well-known for is being pretty wise in taking care of our resources. I particularly like the idea of the in-lu parking program because it prepares us for something that we don't know is gonna happen yet. Might not even be Swinson's Hotel. Might be something else. So I think there's a lot of wisdom in keeping that in our back pocket for an eventuality that we'll be very happy we had at our disposal in the future. But I also don't want us to think that this intractable problem of parking is something that we can't yet come up with better solutions for. I think that the discussions we've had have progressed us further. Each time we come up with a recommendation, part of it's taken, part of it's not. That is a process. And I was just talking to someone today. Our parking situation is gonna change as our transportation systems change. We don't know what's gonna happen in ten or fifteen years. We really don't. We don't know how business is going to change. My first question of staff, I think, was pretty pertinent. I don't know that the merchants really want parklets. I haven't heard from the ones I've talked to, not many, I have to admit. But still, I haven't heard that as a, as a crying demand out there. What I think we're trying to address, actually, is not parklets necessarily. I think we're trying to address some of the aspects that we all know, we all know about this community and that we love. It's, it's a quaint town, but we also love our merchants. It's a place that we like to come to and visit and enjoy. What are some of the things that we could come up, come up with that would make that even more so? Now, in some communities, parklets may work. They have an immense reservoir of parking available. The idea that sometimes uses are compatible so that the parking is available at night, that someone used during the day, is much more so in a large city, a large urban area. We don't have that availability here in the same proportion. So taking out some parking has a bigger impact. So parklets may work well in San Francisco. They may work well in other large urban areas. But I think it's, it's a harder, it's a harder, it's a harder choice to make here. So if we do go back to the parking commission and ask them to remul this decision, excuse me, remul the parking issues over again, I want to know that this community of Capitola is really gonna benefit from doing something like a parklet. If that's something that we could sacrifice some of our in-lu parking for, and we've made that decision because we've done an analysis on it, I think that's a reasonable way to go. I would not want it to be wholesale. If we do something like this, maybe five spots or ten spots at the most, nothing wholesale. I think the larger chunk should be saved for something that we don't know yet is gonna come. It could be Swinson's Hotel. It could be something else. And so I really don't like the idea at this time, but I would like to support staff's recommendation that we move ahead with some of the small changes that are, are gonna have incremental benefits and benefit our merchants also. Thank you.
I'm gonna talk about the in-lu first because the reason this is in front of us is in our zoning ordinance right now. There's a in-lu section, but there's really not a defined ordinance. The language is in there. And I thought we were here tonight to try to at least define what that language would be. Going back to the parking, prior to being on the city council, I served on the parking commission. I was there when we created this arbitrary number because that's what it was for the hotel because we were trying to speculate that we wanted to not deter a large hotel from coming into the village by not having spaces available. So I said, let's come up with a number that I, it's not based on any formula other than, like I said, the availability number minus what we thought we were gonna have, which be it fifty-six or fifty-seven, that was what we had to set aside. And it was, this is our incentive to the hotel to say that if you were to come and build a hotel, we would have these places for you should you need them. But the truth of the matter was, is we actually needed to sell those places because there's no other way we could finance that hotel. I mean, the parking structure. I, I think that somebody mentioned that, you know, we don't know if we want a parking structure. I think everybody wants a parking structure. I don't hear the businesses say they don't want it. I don't hear some residents. I don't hear anybody say they don't want it. The question comes, who's gonna pay for it? So here's where the rub comes in because the in-lu program, it was our intention that if somebody were to come and build a hotel on the theater site, they would be purchasing those, those spots for a, for a determined number that was basically equivalent to whatever the amount of parking places in the structure. That's the equivalent fee. And I think our intent was, we were hopeful to raise a couple million dollars selling parking spots that would help pay for the structure, which at that time, we believed to be twelve to fifteen thousand, which in reality today, it's probably more like twenty thousand. So, twenty million, I'm sorry, thank you. Twenty million. Yeah, no, million. So where I, where I'm at on this policy is, is I remember that the intent, and that's what I tried to go back to when we sat on that board, the intent was, we didn't want to parcel these out, I believe the, the expression, the onesie twosie thing. It was never the intent to sell these out in a, in a garage sale fashion. It was set aside places for a large-scale hotel. And we, you know, we were trying to put some teeth into it, and we were, so we put in the valet provision. And as I look at this now, I'm, I'm, I've been, you know, cautiously optimistic that someday, somebody's gonna build a hotel on that site. And as Dennis mentioned, you know, with, with the water consideration, I'm still optimistic that somebody's gonna build a hotel on that site. But would I, would I bet money on it? I don't know that I would. So my feeling on this is, I'm interested in establishing an in-lu parking fee. And that means, and, and as was mentioned, it isn't like these are surplus sites, but these are dedicated parking sites that we've set aside. And if at the end goal was to build a parking structure, and at the end goal, we were to raise by selling them at thirty-five to forty thousand dollars apiece, we would raise two and a half million dollars, then we would be progressing in a path to generate two and a half million dollars to build that parking structure. I know there were concerns mentioned about where that money went, whether it's gonna be set into a separate fund. And, you know, there have been ways where money is put into a fund, and somehow that money gets used in a quasi-fashion that doesn't deliver the product. And so what's, what I would, what I would want to do if I were to support an in-lu program, which I'm inclined to do, is, is to say that, at this point, the philosophy of that, of when we made that decision about the parking places was, it was for overnight visitors. Okay? What we're trying to encourage is overnight visitors. I think TJ brought up a number. He said fifty-three percent of the people that come to the village are here to go to the beach. Another twelve percent for the restaurants, twenty percent for shopping. So, you know, we're trying to encourage people to come here, spend the night, eat in the restaurants, shop in the village, more than just come to the beach, pack up your bags, and go home. So to encourage, you know, what I know is that we've got a couple hotels in the problem, hotels in the village that have problems with parking. So what I would be open to doing is, is this arbitrary number of fifty-six. If we were to take and to say, put ten of those places up available for lodging establishments only. Not for restaurants, not for bars, not for any other use, lodging establishments only. And they would be based on a fee of whatever the number is, somewhere in my mind, between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars per place. And then if these lodging institutions wanted to buy in-lu parking places for lodging, I'd feel like I was in the spirit of what we intended to do. And I also believe that, I don't think that the need was ever given to us about how many spots the new hotel would want in their own minds. They believe they're not gonna have a need for any spots. And therefore, we would have this program to try to raise money for a parking structure, if that's our goal, that's not gonna be taken by them. And I, I feel like if I, if I said ten places could be given up, dropping it from whether it's fifty-seven or fifty-six to forty-seven or forty-six, at thirty-five to forty thousand dollars apiece, that would be language I would be comfortable putting into a in-lu parking program. And therefore, we do have an in-lu parking program. Because right now, I think it just is an index in the book that doesn't really say how it works. So that's my opinion on in-lu parking. With regards to the parklets, I think it was mentioned, you know, it isn't a further discussion, I think. I think Dennis has brought this up. I think I was lukewarm in the past. Jacques has said some, some encouraging things about it. I don't really know if it would work in the village. I like the idea of establishing it with a limit of saying, you know, I, I would be willing to do what I call a pilot program. I'd be willing to put this on an agenda for another meeting, have people come in and weigh in about it, whether they would like to sit and have a glass of wine in the street next to the diesel motor that's in the parking lot next to them. I don't know. But, but I, I, what I don't want to do, you know, is say, this is absolutely not gonna work in this town because I don't know. So I, I would be willing to say, let's put it on the agenda. Let's maybe possibly talk about a pilot program for one year and see if anybody wants to even buy into it. Someone could buy into it and say, oh, my God, that was the worst thing I ever tried, and, you know, then we would know. So that's my views on these two policies with regards to parklets and in-lu. I have a question.
Sure.
What hotels? Well, you've got the Capitola Hotel that has a parking problem. And you have the, I'm gonna blow the name. It's the Harbor Lights, but I think it's called Capitola Suites.
But these are hotels functioning with its finite number of rooms under, and granted their use permit under a previous code that we can't come to them now and say to the Capitola Hotel, guess what? You have to buy five parking spaces at thirty-five thousand apiece.
No, no, no. They would want to come and buy them. They don't have to buy them. This is a, this is an in-lu program at their discretion. These ten places are set aside for lodging at their discretion.
I could add to this. The Capitola Hotel has been
The Capitola Hotel has been in previously, or their architect has been in, asking about expanding the hotel. So, under that scenario, if they were to add a third story to the hotel and/or expand it in any shape or form on that property, then they would buy the spaces.
Asked and answered, I got that.
Instead, if nobody buys these, there's no harm, but we've established a policy.
Let's remember that if, let's say whoever builds the hotel in the theater parking lot, if it should come to pass, it's, we don't have to give them the option to buy these 57, we can make them buy these 57. We will have their hearts and minds in our hand.
We can negotiate anything.
That's right. They may not have an option, because we don't want 57 cars more in the village coming in and parking. We require for a development like that, they must be valeted. So, that was the intent behind that.
Well, the intent in what we were in the room with also was, you know, was overnight parking. And what I don't want to do is preclude, should Capitola Hotel, which I consider a good business in this town, want to expand, I'd love to have those places available to offer. And I don't think it's going to go against what they have.
Well, this is frustrating on a number of levels. People come into the village and they know what they bought, they know what they're renting, they know what they have. And it's frustrating, because then they want more, 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 more. And that all comes on the backs of the residents down there, who have had a parking challenge forever. There used to be more people that lived there year-round, and there aren't as many now, but there's still a lot of people that live there, and they fight for a parking place. And it's been very frustrating for me every time we have decreased parking for them. It's not fair. I know people who've lived there and are living there now, and it's tough, it's tough. And they know that, you know, when they live there, but we're just, you know, we'd make it tougher if we did parklets. So, I'm not in favor of parklets. I don't like sitting in the curb in the gutter by them personally. Other people may like it, great, go where they're, you know, where they are and enjoy yourselves. But aesthetically, I don't particularly like them, and I don't particularly want to see them in the village. But I really don't want to take away parking, and that would do it. Parking is so precious in the village that I couldn't support that at all. And so, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to speak about that before. But about possibly giving away some of the spaces, I really wouldn't really support that at all, because we did, you know, it's frustrating too, because we had this conversation before, and I thought we were all together on it, and going to move in the same direction of saving those places for that theater site. We don't know what's going to go on at the theater site. We hope it's a hotel, may not be, maybe something else. But, we have the spaces there in case they do want to do that. And you're right, it was to get overnight accommodations for economic development. If we want good economic development in this village, we need to do a lot more than just providing parking. We need to hire someone to work with the owners of the property down there to get businesses that will be successful, and successful year-round, and bring in income. It hasn't happened in 50 years, I'm hopeful that it may happen in the future, but, you know, the village is sort of, the village is the village, and it's not, it's not an amusement park or a place or anything like that. It is unique, it's beautiful, but it is a combination, and it always has been. Go back and look at that, look at that film, Brad McDonald's film in the 50s. It, Capitola, were residences, a lot of residences, a lot of people, and some businesses, and a bunch of businesses. But, it's really getting tipped toward, in the village and in some of our discussions, the discussion is getting tipped towards the businesses, and it really needs to come back on focusing on the residents here, throughout the city, throughout the city. And we often don't pay enough attention to the residents in all parts of this city. And I challenge the people running for office, when you go knock on doors and talk to people, asking, "Would they support a hotel in the village, and how big? Would you support parklets? And would you support a parking structure? And would you support, you know, the city having to pay for that kind of a parking structure?" When I ran two years ago, I asked, and I didn't get much interest in a parking structure. The people in this town, the residences, want their streets paved. They would say, "Look at my street." I said, "Yeah, isn't it terrible? We're working on it." But, the people here want basic services, and we're not really providing them always. And that's what I think our focus needs to be. We need to pay attention to the village, but it's its own special problem. We're not going to solve business people down there that run funny businesses that don't last very long, because they're the wrong kind of mix for the village, or that they're marginal, because they just don't have good merchandising, or a good marketing plan, or whatever their problem is, they're not successful. That's not our fault, that's not our fault.
Mr. Mayor, two things. Remember that our ordinance requires the 56 or 57 spaces, should it be used for a hotel, that the hotel has to police those spaces themselves, which means that they have to make sure those spaces are only available and always available for their residents. Something like a large hotel with 57 spaces is able to, you know, dedicate personnel to do that sort of thing with valet parking? I don't know if someone like the Capitola Hotel is ready to go back and check and see if their four parking spaces are only being occupied by their four parking people. Secondly, if I could wave a magic wand and create 100 parking spaces in the village, people would still be backed up searching for the empty parking space, trust me. And parklets, your idea about the pilot plan? I think letting a restaurant pick two spaces for a year and seeing what it looks like is worth an effort. But, I think giving away 20 and making it part of our plan...
Are they going to, would they reimburse us for lost revenue from the meters?
I'm sure that, you know, we're in charge of those spaces. I'm sure that's what it would cost them to put that parklet in. That's what happens.
It wouldn't be giving it to them, yeah. Dennis, go ahead.
I'll follow with Mike. I mean, a demonstration program would prove its worth or not its worth. And so, we got an application in that makes sense, it would have to go through the regular planning process to do it. And we don't really need to make a permanent ordinance for it all, we can just declare it as a demonstration project. And maybe it takes two, maybe it takes three spaces out, but you could see the economic benefit to it. And, you know, there's a letter written to us just today, and there's a comment about, one of the top concerns that came out of the Village-Capitola process was a negative feeling from Capitola residents about continued new development in the village. Do I live in a different town? I mean, there's been no, in 20 years I've lived here, there's been no development like that. And Elsie's correct in this, in stating that it's because of our limitation on... Take a look at the buildings down there. Look at the age of those buildings. And you know why the property owners don't want to improve those buildings? Because they don't see any worth in putting any money into them. Because you can't make improvements beyond what's there. We have designated residential to a second story for years. And because it's not residential, it's because of landlord, either landlords have chosen something else there, maybe have been wrecked. But you can't have a commercial on a second story in Capitola Village. So, that's not a choice, that's not a change in land use. It hasn't, yes, less people live down there, it's mainly because less people choose to live down there. And I'll tell you what, their biggest problem with the people who live down there, is the traffic driving through their front yard 24 hours a day. That's the problem. Until we hear something from this council and this community that wants to really fix the village, we're going to keep doing this. Every 10 years, we're going to come back with the same thing. And I'll guarantee you, I can almost guarantee you, that you will not see a hotel in there for 10 or 20 years. So, you're not fixing anything by waiting for that hotel. It does nothing but stops economic development within that village. I'm not talking about expansion, I'm talking about giving the opportunity for places and spaces that are already there to prosper. And we have many holes in that village. The most prosperous are the restaurants, mainly because of the location and the fact that people come there for food. But, it's just, we're going to be in the same place from 10 years from now, unless somebody wants to put forth some kind of vision. As was brought to us when we did, you're right, Mike, 20 years ago. It was 20 years ago we did the Village Master Plan. We haven't even completed that. We've gone through Phase 1 and 2, we still have that esplanade that doesn't work. And the reason it doesn't work is because we have created, and it's been there, is a giant parking lot. So, when we decide that the people's space is more important than the car space down there, and we decide to build a parking structure up here and shuttle people down there, we will have a nice village. But until that day, no change is not good change. No change puts us as after, and we'll have completely deterioration of building, particularly with the requirements that Coastal Commission is going to put us in down there. So, think vision, think out of the box, it's time to do that right now. We really have to go back. If you want to send back the planning commission, give them something to chew on. Let them see what they have a vision for Capitola in the future. And so, that's my statement. I'm willing to go with parklets, take a chance on that, and do one and see if it works for the community.
Well, if you're going to do one, I would just say, allow yourself to go to two. I mean, if it's a two-spot minimum, then you would, two people, two places, two businesses, two spaces for maximum. I mean, just so you don't...
I think the pilot program needs to come back at a different...
Absolutely, no, I'm just saying, I would, my recommendation, what I said...
That's certainly worthy of discussion.
I would say, let's put it on the next agenda, let's have it, we can notice it, we can have people come in and weigh on it. It might be, we might fill the house, we might have nobody talk, but just on a whim, I said, rather than limit yourself to one, I think, you know, if two people come in, I'd hate to have to pick who it is.
For instance, if Kava and...
Well, the two most likely, the two most likely businesses that could apply would be Kava and Carusas. And it would be side by side, it could be four places. And Stephanie, I'm not willing to give up places, I'm just trying to be accommodating to both sides.
But what are the both sides? The businesses aren't really asking us for this, I haven't heard anybody answer this.
No, there's been appeals from Kava, I know that. And one of the comments I just want to make is, you know, with regard to this Capitola Hotel, I mean, we've got a viable hotel in the village, and if they're talking about expansion, you sometimes have to ask yourself, is the vision looking for, this could be the only expansion of hotel rooms in the village for 10 years. And if these people are just hindered by the fact that they don't have parking, what we're doing is, we're not giving them parking. We're just creating an ordinance that they could apply for with some guidelines. And we're also establishing that if the city of Capitola is going to sell a parking place, there's going to be a fee, and here's how you're going to pay it, and this is the criteria. And it gives us some leverage point when we're moving, if we do deal with a big hotel developer, "Hey, here's our In-Lu policy, and we've got these fees for you to buy." Or, you know, you could say, "We're going to demand that you buy this," and that's... I always look that when I go into a negotiation on demanding, sometimes it's not as successful. I mean, we can offer these places here, and we can say, "This is what we'd like to do." But in the meantime, I would, you know, if the water thing gets worse, or if the building market changes again, and we still have a hotel builder in the village that wants to do an expansion, we've created a policy that I believe meets the intent of what that group did when they decided. It was to provide overnight lodging, not for a bar, not for a restaurant, it's for overnight visitors. And I think that if you want to talk about making the village a better place, it's going to be with overnight visitors that are coming here to dine and shop and enjoy our town.
But, you know, we are going to find more water, we have to be optimistic. They are looking, they are focused like a laser on looking for more water, and we're going to find it, and we will have more development in the future, it's going to take a few years.
The laser water people are out there, I'll go along with you on that. And I feel positive about it too, but I think I would venture a motion that at this time, we not codify an In-Lu parking fee, and that is my motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I believe that in the future, there's a good opportunity. If somebody like the Capitola Hotel, which is the only one I can think of, comes to us, we can possibly revisit it for those four or five spaces. If they're ready, A, to pay for them, if we're ready to put the money in an incumbent account, and if they're willing to police their program. But, I don't want to put it in because it's the camel's nose. I'm not ready for the camel's nose in our tent.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an alternative motion.
I have to call that motion first.
No, you can't. If I call alternative, you have to take mine first.
Yeah, his has to come first.
If I get a second.
Yeah, I'll second your motion, what's your motion?
My motion is, we take 20 of those designated In-Lu spaces, and we allow them to go to smaller hotels and other establishments that may seem suitable for expansion by the planning commission in the city.
I'm not going to second that until we draw that.
I think it was the other establishments that killed him.
Do you want to alter your motion?
Make a suggestion.
It's your motion.
It's your motion, yeah.
Okay, okay, smaller hotels. Smaller hotels, let's just keep it at that right now.
I'll second that.
20 parking spaces? That's the motion, 20 parking spaces?
I'll second that. 20 parking spaces, a motion and a second, so on the first motion...
We have to vote on his.
First.
On the second.
Sustitute first.
On the second motion, which, if I can get this back right, is for...
20.
Resident, you know, was the term you used, it was for hotels accommodated, what was the...
Smaller hotels.
Smaller hotels, smaller hotels, 20 spaces.
Next.
Next, motion and a second.
So, to be clear, what we would be doing, staff, is we would be bringing back that language in the specific policy. Other than that, we could call a break, and we could try and draft it right here and now, but, you know, we would, one or the other. We'd be bringing back, modifying the existing policy I-30, 33, to include a designation of a specific number of spaces for small hotels. Is that clear?
Clear. You want more discussion?
Oh, well, that's a motion and a second.
I was going to have a roll call vote.
We can discuss it if you want to.
You have another comment you'd like to make?
Yeah, I do. You know, I think you had it pretty right. When, the whole focus of this was for accommodations, which is in general going to benefit the businesses of Capitola. So, I totally agree with that. I don't see it as the nose underneath the tent, so to speak. I keep thinking, if we did get a big hotel, Swenson's Hotel, and we did not have these 56, 57 spaces, what would we do? We'd be in the position of saying, if I read Capitola right, we do not want traffic going in and out of downtown. We don't want added congestion, because you've added 70 rooms, and who knows how many cars per room, and then you've added all the staff, and how many people on that staff. We do not want that. So, we're going to say to whomever gets that site and develops it, that you are going to have to put in the money to build a parking structure that will accommodate those added burdens on Capitola. So, even if we didn't have In-Lu, we would tell whoever developed that site, "You are going to have to provide that parking." That's, I believe, what this city wants. And that's why I think a lot of us were elected, because we want to protect the esplanade, we want to protect our downtown. And I think all of us are adamant about that. So, even if we didn't have that In-Lu, we would do that. So, I support this motion, because it is in the spirit of what the Parking Commission came up with, to use it for accommodations which are going to have a ripple effect in a beneficial way on the businesses of Capitola.
So, we're going to do a roll call on the second motion, which was for 20 spaces for lodging.
What about the first motion?
I'm going to do that one second, I'm going to do that one second.
Okay. Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Termany?
No.
Mayor Botorff?
No.
And on the second motion, it is for, first motion, thank you, Mr. Graves. On the first motion, that is to not address the policy...
Tonight.
Not address the policy tonight, is that pretty succinct?
Well, it's to not...
Not establish any criteria.
Not establish any...
Criteria for parking policy. That was a motion and a second, so... I don't believe there was a, was there a second? There was a second.
I ask for a friendly amendment.
Sure, you can ask for anything.
Okay, so, if this passes, we're going to say not establish a policy. I would like to ask that a friendly amendment would be not to establish a policy tonight, but to put it back to the Parking Commission to come up with alternatives that could expand that into something that might be workable for Capitola.
Expand what into something that might be workable?
The use of the In-Lu parking.
They can talk about that anytime, they'll bring us any ideas anytime.
They can, but, under direction of the City Council, I'd like to have that addressed at the Parking Committee.
I have no problem sending that to the Parking Committee, but I will not accept the friendly amendment, because I don't want it to be part of the motion.
Okay, I think you can choose, yeah, thank you. Okay, so, we'll do a roll call on that.
Just to get clarification on what we would be doing. So, the direction from Councilmember Termany, if Councilmember Termany's motion passes, is the existing policy would remain as written.
Correct.
The one piece of this that staff would recommend is that this wouldn't preclude us from taking some of the elements of the existing policy and including them in the updated ordinance to make sure that they were codified and part of our LCP.
So, this is going to go into ordinance form?
The intent behind this is that the policy at some point should be woven into the ordinance. So, at some point, you're going to, you know, it's in the city's best interest to do that.
In the coming months or years, will we be able to change that?
Of course.
You can change it, but once it gets codified, it's harder to change. In policy form, at this point, it is easier, frankly...
form, at this point, it is easier, frankly, I think our first kind of drafting the ordinance language, should this be the direction of the council tonight, would be to try to keep it as open as possible in the ordinance itself, and have the details of the policy.
But you know what, it's going to go to the coastal commission, and that's where the rubber meets the road, and so they're going to take a look at all of this stuff and make their decisions about all of this stuff.
And the option, aside from my motion, what is the option, leaving it, leaving it the way it is?
Make another order.
Make another order.
Because right now, it is, we have codified the fact that there's 56, 57 parking spaces for a large hotel.
We've only codified it in our own policy, so essentially, I think the recommendation from staff would be to weave that language, some of that language in to the ordinance, frankly, as I said before, I think that the ordinance language would be broader, and the policy language, we would leave as is.
Can we...
Does that make sense?
Can we get a recommendation from staff at the next meeting for that wording?
You would see that, yes, you would see that as part of the files on here.
So this will come back to us.
And as part of the zoning code update, it comes back to the planning commission first.
Right, okay, then, my motion stands, and under discussion, you know, I'm, I was this close to Dennis's motion.
And I think we should call the vote.
But here's my concern, and that is, the Capitola Mercantile builds 10 condos, buys 10 parking spaces of the 20, and they no longer, they are no longer visitor-serving, their 10 condos, but they're lodging.
You can, you can condition it to...
They have to get approval of the project.
So in other words, we can condition it to that, Mike?
It gets slippery, I'm just worried, I'm concerned about bricking and mortaring this up behind the wall, as, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I, 100%, but I don't have the same concern.
And I don't have, I have no other place to go with this, because...
I think there's other places.
In general, so I will let my motion stand, because I was the motion maker.
I have a motion, so Sue, we're going to call for a roll call on that motion.
Counsel.
This is, he is saying that we're going to retain the policy as is.
And make the policy part of our ordinance.
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Councilmember Harland?
Aye.
Councilmember Betran?
No.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Botorff?
No.
So we have two motions that have failed, is there any other motion that someone would like to make?
Okay, I'll make the same motion before, but I'll reduce it down to 10 from the 19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion?
I'll just go back to my original thought, that these places are for, it was a kind of a deal that we made with the parking commission, and the planning commission, and ourselves, that we would save these spaces for that use, possible use, and we need to give it a little more time before we change our direction, I think.
And I'll include in that, that those 10 spaces can only be used for development that creates visitor-serving, and so when you give them, they issued their use permit, it has to be for visitor-serving.
Visitor-serving uses, do you mean any sort of visitor-serving use, or are we talking about hotel visit? Okay, that...
We can condition that, so that takes a fear away from the condo issue.
Is the second maker okay with that?
I agree, to me, that's the intent of the parking commission, that we supply extra spots for visitors that will stay here, have a decent vacation...
Short-term.
Short-term, use our businesses, you know, for part of that, I'm totally supportive of that.
Any other discussion? Sue, can we get a roll call vote on that motion?
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Betran?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
No.
Mayor Botorff?
Aye.
That motion carries three to two, with Termini and Harland dissenting, so with that, we can move on to part two.
Could we make a comment from the audience?
Not really, but come on up, Ron, go ahead, you know what?
Part two comments, because we only took part one comments.
I'm just, you know, because of the limited appearance tonight, I'm going to take the comment.
Okay, we heard some things that I hadn't heard before, and you guys talked for a great deal about parklets when we were talking about in-lu fees, and I didn't say anything during that, it concerns me, though, that, Dennis, I thought you did some work for Mr. DeWares down in the village.
Twelve years ago.
You didn't do some most recent plans when I saw you meeting with him, that's the reason I asked, and if that was...
I've seen Peter DeWares.
Ron, do you have a point?
Yeah, the point would be that he wouldn't get to vote, if he'd had...
Okay, all right. He clarified that.
Anyway, having said that, are we going, you know, staff made their presentation, where are we going with this meeting from now, I assume we're going to talk about the other things in the ordinance, like the parklets, the intensification of use, those kind of things.
We had two, there's two parts of the night tonight, Ron, first was the in-lu program, which included the parklets, there was no decision made on the parklets, it's going to come back maybe at another meeting, we're just going to put it on the agenda, notice it, and have people talk about it.
So we're going to get another chance on the parklets?
Absolutely, no decision was made on the parklets.
Because, you know, when you put up the red line drawing of the number of places that could have had parklets, that the staff prepared, I saw at least five additional spaces that did not have outside seating that could apply for parklets.
Ron, it's a whole dynamic discussion, I realize that, so we're in no way prepared to do that with not noticing.
I think your comment was well taken, Mr. Mayor, drive just over the hill to Wool Glen, and they put parklets in the street parking over there, and talk to the people that used to sit in them, they don't really feel safe.
And that's why we're going to have a public hearing, so that's good, we're going to, come on up, Bob, real quick, okay, real quick.
I just wanted to throw this out.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to throw this out, is there any reason, reason, whichever way this goes, that leasing or renting these 57 or a portion of parking spaces instead of selling them, has anyone brought that up, leasing? Just wanted to throw it out.
Like an annual fee, I was mentioning it a little bit.
Okay, we're going to go on to phase two, which is...
Phase two is the zoning code update, and talking about specifically parking in the village, so either to...
Hold on a second, parklets are something I'm going to recommend at the end of the meeting, that the city manager puts on the agenda, and we're going to do it as a separate issue.
Okay.
And can you just say duly noted on that for...
Duly noted, it's already included in the notes.
Okay, there we go.
So, the options here are to take the work that's been done on the zoning code to date, you're welcome to add to the red line revisions when we get to that chapter, or would you like to initiate a separate village parking strategy? So moving ahead with the draft zoning code or strategy?
I...
Do you want me to start? Well, if you'd like, sure.
I think it's real important to continue going through this and making our recommended changes and move this along, I don't want to stop and do a, have a big months, 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 months-long study and discussion and so forth with the village parking, I mean, it's such a big, big topic, happy to talk about it, but it should be done separately, we need to move along with this and get it to the coastal commission, see where we are.
I would move option one, continue with draft changes, I like the changes the planning commission made, I think they were appropriate, I think they were measured, and I believe that now that we have the in-lu parking fee thing, and that parklets out of the way, the other recommendations are perfectly rational.
It makes really good sense.
I want to know what those, I want to know what in wording that those items are.
Right here, the staff report.
The current six-seat limit for takeout restaurants has been eliminated and replaced with allowance for 300 square feet.
Can you bring that screen up?
New provision has been added to allow eating and drinking establishments to be expanded by 20% of the existing floor area, draft code would prohibit parking reductions in the village through shared parking arrangements and parking demand studies for mixed-use development, and I don't care about the allowance for mechanical parking lifts, because I don't see that happening, I think that those, and as an aside, no more parking studies by consultants.
(laughing).
Ever.
By the applicant's consultant.
Mike is...
Because I can bring you to the bookcase upstairs, where the six we paid for already are still sitting.
Mike, since you recited it, is the mixed use in there or not in there, are we going to allow mixed use?
Can you go back to that one slide, wasn't it on that one slide that showed them all, with all the graphs?
The shared parking study is not allowed in the village, as proposed by the planning commission.
So the planning commission...
Because we got one, and it wasn't very accurate, so why bother to get one, we might as well do our own, and have the applicant pay for it, and have a good, you know, proficient consultant.
Right, so the shared parking study can take place upon application?
Only for the village, the future village hotel, but otherwise, that was taken out of the...
Taken out of the village.
Yeah.
Other parts of the city, it's still intact, just not the village.
Yeah, there's one section of code that's for different ways to decrease onsite parking, and one was through a shared parking study, and that, the only areas of that section of code that are allowed to be reviewed within the village is in-lu parking and valet parking, so there's...
Let me explain the danger in this thing, this is the fact that in 100 years from now, there'll be no, the ground floor in the village will be all...
Underwater.
Either underwater, or the fact that you won't, you won't have your residential, all your residential will be upstairs, so the idea of a residential-commercial mix and being able to share parking makes sense in the village, maybe not today, but in the future it will, so I think the tool should stay in there, and basically, it can be decided at the planning commission, they can make that determination, whether it fits or not fits.
Can we make shared parking on a case-by-case basis, because for a business to come in and be able to stand on shared parking, they would, for one thing, you know, it's very, the two issues I see are food establishments and nightclubs, and retail, and if a bar is open at, you know, 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night, and the retails are closed, that's the only case I can see, other than that, there is no case for shared parking.
Yeah, one great example is it's wine time, and they had a parking study done because of the flexibility in the hours of the operations at that site.
Because they share with commercial retail.
They share with office space, and at the time, yeah, personal services, but the hours are different, and they do have onsite parking, there's limited areas that would be able to utilize this tool, because the majority of commercial in the village does not have parking, but so it would only be applicable to those places that have onsite parking.
I'm sorry, to interrupt you, are all of their places behind there in that lot available for their customers at night?
They are supposed to be available for all the customers.
I'd like you to check that, please.
Okay.
I'd like to ask another question.
Yes.
The mercantile has onsite parking, and yet, it is also a profit center for the mercantile, how does everyone feel about having a lot of number of parking spaces for establishments, and also making it a paid parking lot at the same time, it's somewhere or somehow, that seems to be in conflict, or is it?
From staff's perspective, it is a problem, and we expressed that concern when the conceptual review for the mercantile came in, that they were showing that they had all this available parking, but yet they sell it to beachgoers, and it didn't square in our minds that if they're available for tourists, how are you providing for the users of your businesses? So I concur with your comments.
There's only two lots in the whole village that provide their own parking, nobody else does, and that's Capitola Theater and the Mercantile, nobody else in the village provides any parking.
But the Capitola Theater is not using those parking spaces as a rationale for businesses, it is purely a paid parking lot, that's its business, and yet the mercantile has a paid parking lot, but is also...
Satisfying the requirements.
Using those parking spaces to satisfy their parking requirements, that one's uncomfortable to me.
Because people, the people who want to use businesses have to pay to park there inside, I mean, they have to pay on the street too.
Or, you know, 20 beachgoers go and park their cars, and then now the businesses no longer have parking spaces, so there's no turnover in that lot.
But there's no, there's no, there's really, in reality, there's no public parking there, it's for, you're paying to get onto the property, because they're required to have those parking spots for that merchant business there.
I'm going, I'm going sideways on that. If there's no more questions, then I'm going to open it up to the public, okay, so at this time, we're going to open up the public to talk about the six-seat rule, the expansions, the valet, any ones that are on this list, so come on up, and thank you for your patience.
Nels Westman again, well, I did want to say that I attended, I think, most all of the planning commission sessions that involve parking, and I support most of the changes that they're recommending, I think they strike a nice balance, supporting the existing businesses, and trying to give them a little more flexibility, and improving their situation, the one area that I did not support at all was the phantom parking conversation, and, you know, of all my time in Capitola and talking to people and everything else, the one thing people never talk about with the village is saying, it's an amusement park, I mean, that chaps my hide, I hear them say things like quaint, charming, pedestrian scale, nice mix of uses and everything else, God spare me that it becomes an amusement park, I just cringe at it, and the other thing is that the only businesses that make money in the village, as I said in my email, are bars and restaurants, and with the prices that are being paid now for these properties in the village, I mean, it's inconceivable to me that these properties can be anything other than bars and restaurants, and if you loosen up the parking requirements for bars and restaurants, the village is not only going to be an amusement park, it's going to have a food court, it's just going to be a giant food court, so geez, let's try and preserve some of what the village is, and, you know, I was also one of the members, founding members of Vision Capitola, and one of the highest values that we had from that survey, where people said how much they treasured and valued the charm and the quaintness and the mix of Capitola Village as it is now, and one of the things, as far as goals that came out of it, was how much they wanted to not have a lot of new business development and construction, and more people, and more congestion, and more parking problems in the village, so think long-term, please, about the implications of opening up the village to even more development by relaxing parking standards, and finally, like Ron, I did not realize that parklets were appropriate for the last thing, I thought we were focusing in on lue, my bad, I didn't see the fine print, I cannot tell you how strongly I object to this, to a public policy of releasing or selling off, or lease, whatever you're going to do, public parking spaces in the village, that precious rare commodity, so that floundering and struggling businesses can expand their business operations into our parking, it's just, it's bad policy, it's not smart, we should not be subsidizing unsuccessful businesses, so that is going to be a battle when that comes back, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boy, a lot of good, a lot of good thought going on here.
Absolutely.
In the, in the case of parklets, someone raised the issue, I think it was you, Mr. Mayor.
Just, you know, we're not going to talk about parklets, because we're going to put them on an agenda by themselves, and so we've already said, it's not, it's really not appropriate to talk about tonight, we kind of got into it.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about the expansion rules with the six seats.
Okay, you know, the hotels, I think you also have to take in consideration, or at least in mind, is that hotels not always stay hotels, they get converted to condos, frankly, if I owned the Harbor Lights, I'd be pushing for a condo conversion right now, they get changed into timeshares, all kinds of stuff happens, so somebody made the point, I think it was Dennis, that that's really the property of the people of Capitola, and I'm not sure it's right to sell the 50, you know, spaces at all, so that's all, I just wanted to bring that up, thought, by the way, thank you for bringing up the mercantile issue, because I've often thought about that, and I was amazed that no one brought it up.
I promise not to talk about parklets.
Again, it's really a question of staff, and it's not proper to do it, except through you, the chair, but when the early discussion was put forth to you by our illustrious planner over here, and I mean the one with blonde hair, she talked about takeouts, and I am trying to fathom in to these recommendations, how that works, there's probably no more intensification... trying to fathom in to these recommendations, how that works. There's probably no more intensification of traffic, both foot traffic, car traffic, parking traffic, than a takeout. And so I'm wondering, how does it fit into the new rules? Maybe they can explain.
Go ahead and respond to that.
Okay, so currently, a takeout food and beverage, they can have up to six seats.
Right.
And the new ordinance is drafted that the definition of takeout food and beverage is that they have up to 300 square feet that is accessible to the public. So as long as there's less than 300 square feet that the public can be in, then it only requires one space for 240. And the chairs, we no longer count chairs, we count the square footage of the accessible area.
That makes me think a little bit. I'm trying to picture many of the takeouts with 350 square feet. All the restaurants have 350 square feet, so they don't fit in. Certainly the hot dog stand in the Mercantile does not fit in. Probably the little coffee bar at the back of the Mercantile does not fit in. Possibly down here in the old Peter Hubig building adjacent to the bridge on the north side of Stockton Avenue probably doesn't fit into the 300 feet. Who does this affect?
Calypso's would fit in. Calypso's, I believe, is about two.
Who, Crusoe's?
Calypso's.
Oh, Crusoe's, okay.
Across the street. I think it's about 240 square feet is the accessible area. And then also the deli that just became a coffee shop that's right on the side of Stockton Bridge.
That's the one I was talking about. I'm not sure that has.
East Side Coffee?
Yes, East Side Coffee.
It may be, it may have 300 square feet inside, but you're not counting, counting the kitchen area. I understand that. I'll make my comment really brief. It's terrible, it's almost like spot zoning, to make special exceptions for people that don't need special exceptions. Because what will happen is, what's there today and what's there tomorrow? Nothing's to prevent a house that fronts on Monterey Avenue or a business that fronts on Monterey Avenue now to be a small takeout of some kind. I've always heard, for example, like El Toro Bravo wants to take all the entide seating out and have wanted to be a pizza my heart on the east side of Capitola Village. And I think this is bad, bad, bad planning to do it for specific purposes. I know that staff gets inundated with requests, and it's nice that staff can say yes to everybody, but sometimes we just have to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the planning commission's reasoning for this change is there's been a longstanding problem of seat counting in the village. The current rules, you're allowed to have up to six seats. We often permit to take out restaurants at six seats, and once they open, a seventh, eighth, 10th, 12th seat shows up. And it becomes an enforcement nightmare. We go out, we'll tell them to take out the extra seats, a Saturday night, they come back in, there's no enforcement. With the square footage, there's really no debating it. You go in, and as long as the space doesn't expand, there's really no way to game that system. So that was the whole philosophy behind this proposed change.
So let me just try to, you know, clarify this if I can. So what you're saying is, because of the problem with the seats, now it's more, it's more of an occupancy or square footage, and then that, the number of seats that are allowed will be determined by what?
So, Mr. Mayor, the challenge has been that, that within our code right now, today, you could have a retail establishment, 1,000 square feet, 2,000 square feet retail establishment. Someone could walk in and Rich's office and say, "Hey, I'd like to convert that to a takeout restaurant." And we say, "But you're 2,000 square feet. That doesn't make sense. That's not a big takeout restaurant." And they say, "Well, that's fine. I'll only have six chairs." And they show a site plan with, you know, 2,000 square feet of seating, a space as big as this room, with six chairs in it, and they say, "That's what I want to do." It's not what they ever want to do, and it becomes a really tough position for the city. You'll recall that that happened out in Nob Hill Center with the original pizzeria there. They came in under the six-seat rule, and immediately there was a problem. So I think what the planning department and the planning commission were trying to do was put more fixed parameters around what's a takeout restaurant look like. And basically, the definition they came up with was, if you're going to do a takeout restaurant, it's in a small space with about 300 square feet accessible to the public, to just kind of clear that up once and for all. So I think that was the intent by the planning commissions and staffs.
And again, my question is, and so how many seats could you have in that situation?
That's by the occupancy load that's allowed in the village.
Okay, right. So let me use an example. Let's take a place like Boucher's, which is a larger space that originally was allowed to have six seats. Because it's a takeout, and because there was adequate room, they could have 12 seats, if the occupancy load allowed that. And that's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to handcuff them by the six-seat if there was room for the seats. Was that the intent of where the planning commission was going?
Welcome.
I'm going to try not to chap Nels Hyde anymore. But I did want to just go and kind of just to give a little background, how we got to where the planning commission and Commissioner Westman was absent tonight, that we had this 4-0 agreement to relook and revisit the way we do the, to look at how we park in the village. Because really what you're voting on, and what we looked at, is once you put that number, regardless of the square foot, whether it's 60 square feet or 300 square feet for dining space, you just have said there's no more room to grow because there are no parking spots. Nobody has a parking spot. So if you're saying that, you know, if, I forgot Mr. Kabob's new name already.
Roxepetra.
There you go. Roxepetra wants to expand upstairs because all of a sudden he's doing great business, which we would hope he would. That is not really an option in, under this plan that we're about to approve. So this is why you got kicked up to the policy. It's your decision. I don't have a dog in the fight. But the reality is, we're tying the hands of those people. And I just had a, you know, maybe a clarification for me, and that was on the local coastal program, when I think staff was talking about the required adequate for new users. And I'm not sure whether that new users means new tenants or new occupants. So I don't know what that really meant. But I do know that A above that requires this, I talked about the three or four, 400 parking spots, and this was before we had lower and upper Pacific Cove. So we've met that, that standard there. And with that, I'll just let you guys.
Could you have a question before you go?
Yes.
The planning commission discussed the possibility of having no parking requirements.
Right.
Where did that go in your discussion? What is, what brought that on?
Well, what brought it on was that you can, you can put the numbers down there per square foot for dining or for retail, but the reality is, there are no parking spots. The only people that have parking spots in the village are Dors or Swinson. So how does anybody do anything if they want to have a parking spot because nobody owns parking spots? So really, we've just tied the hand of our business group down there because there's no room for them to do anything. Whether, I'm not advocating a food court, I'm not advocating anything. Alls I'm saying is, once we make this agreement, then how do we allow a place to expand or change or do anything? That's it. So status quo.
You're talking about additions too, not, not just what's existing.
Well, I, I can example would be Roxepetra. If they wanted to go upstairs, they couldn't do that. If, you know, if something happened at the bread and they had occupancy up above to expand, they wouldn't be able to expand. So just something to consider. I, you know, the concept, I hate, I'm not going to say the, I was thinking more of like the shopping mall as opposed to, you know, the center, this park, amusement park. But it's the same concept is, you know, we have a general parking area that allows people to come down and visit our shops, our facilities, and go to the beach. The reality is, for nine months out of the year, we're tying the hand of our business, businesses because those busy three months of people going to the beach. And, you know, the businesses have their own ability to make themselves successful or not, but we would, I'd hate to be part of the thing that held them back from being successful. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up, Kristen.
Hello.
Hi.
I would just like to say that as we consider the changes being proposed tonight, that there is a careful balance in supporting both businesses and also maintaining the charm of the village that we already have. I know that's incredibly important to a lot of the people here. And as mentioned previously, it was very high on the list of priorities during the Vision Capitola meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there and encourage careful consideration of these changes.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Susan's the only one who hasn't spoken. Susan, isn't there anything?
Are you sure?
Oh, come on.
Come on, come on, yeah. We're not going to disappoint you if you don't come and weigh in, okay?
You can come up front and talk about ours.
For a penny, you know. Absolutely.
I wanted to say something about in-lu.
In-lu? Oh, whoa!
No, no.
Don't say the P-word either.
No, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to put to rest this issue about the prior in-lu program and what happened to the money and stuff. And, you know, Ron's here. And I have a pretty clear recollection. This was in the early 80s, late 70s, early 80s. And at that point in time, accounting in city governments was quite different than it is right now. You didn't set aside money in special funds for this activity, for that activity. You kept sort of a ledger book and said, "Well, this really is money for this account or that account." So the money from the in-lu program, my recollection is, all went into the general fund. And it was at the time when the city purchased the two mobile home parks, Upper Pacific Cove and Lower Pacific Cove. And there was a lot of money spent by the city in relocating the people from the top down to the bottom and creating a parking lot. And so the in-lu money was spent on that program. It's just that no one could ever go back and document and say, you know, $22 was spent on this or $50 was spent on that. But the money didn't just vanish, it actually did accomplish something for the city of Capitola.
How much money were we talking about, Susan?
Oh, we were not talking about huge sums of money. I think it was about $140,000.
Okay, okay. But factually, you could say the in-lu program paid for the parking lot?
The in-lu program helped pay.
Helped pay for the parking.
Creating the first upper parking.
I'll, I'll close on that note and be happy.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. And the general plan paid for it all.
Okay, we're going to bring it back with a great input.
I have a question. Yeah.
Did you have a question, or are you getting ready to roll?
No, I think, I think I made a motion already.
Mm-hmm.
That was seconded.
Yes, I second it.
To. Support the planning commission's recommendation.
Support the planning commission's recommendation. And Dennis brought up the concept that shared parking arrangements with parking demand studies for mixed use in the development would be prohibited. And he questioned that part of the planning commission's recommendations.
Right, they were not going to allow that.
I'm just bringing us back to where we were.
Question to Jacques.
Yeah.
I probably should have asked this question during staff presentations, so my forgiveness. So on page 7613.
Yes.
And this is dealing with valet parking. So I just read that the planning commission recommends up to 75% of the onsite parking can be taken up in valet parking. So is this a valet parking program that would apply to a hotel, let's say, on the Swinson property?
Yes, and it's up to 25%.
Okay. So in a sense, we're tying our hands here. So we're saying that if Swinson wants 70 spots and he wants 70 parking spaces, and we push back because the only option we have here is to say valet parking is only going to give 25% of that offsite. So that's, that's a problem I have. I mean, I would like to have Swinson put 100% valet parking.
I don't, I don't think that's part of.
Well, that's my question. I.
What we're deciding now.
Well, this is.
But maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
This is part, this is not part of what.
We're not voting on these.
I thought we're voting on this. This is the deal with parking downtown.
No, no, we're just, we're just.
This is, we're asking for direction on how to proceed. We will be bringing.
This will come up, okay.
But also, I should clarify within, when it comes to the hotel, there's a separate section of code that it will be reviewed as a whole project. They're allowed to look at.
I was.
Shared parking, and we also can.
Okay.
They wouldn't be tied to the 25%. And we can clarify that within the code.
Okay.
I look forward to that meeting.
Okay. So I was thinking of parking downtown, valet influences parking, so that was just my question.
If I may, you know, Dennis's point is really well-taken because it's trying to perceive something that we can't perceive because we don't know, especially with, you know, the sea level rise we're talking about. And Kristen Peterson's comments were on point in that this is still a matter of balance, which is why we were talking so much about the in-lu program. So that's the one part I would take, I would amend my motion on and give them the nod on all the rest of their recommendations, but have them reconsider the mixed-use, shared parking concept.
Can we go back to that slide?
Yeah.
Katie, just so we can.
And this is all in, in an effort to be cautious, that these are very small incremental changes. And when we make small changes, we can see how it affects us.
So your motion is for one, two, three, four, and now you want to add five?
No, we, we, the in-lu parking went away.
Okay, so one.
It changed. So the six-seat rule, the expansions, and we're not talking about valet right now.
See, that's.
At least that's not part of the discussion, planning commission's initial revisions.
Sorry. I'll quickly go through. So it's the takeout, food and beverage.
Right.
There it is.
It's these minor changes.
Correct. The minor changes are very important.
This is all we're talking about, is this page right here?
The 20%.
Okay.
Right.
And then this is the page that they, they took out the allowance for low-demand study, transportation, demand management plans, and shared parking in the village. So that was.
So what I'm looking at right now is, a few slides back, the 20%, the 300 square feet, the parking lifts.
Right there.
Right there.
Right there.
That's it.
But what I do want them to reconsider is striking mixed-use, shared parking studies.
Adding that back in.
I think that it should be looked at more carefully, especially for opportunity sites, and that we're not shutting the door on something that might be beneficial. Especially, and I'm, and I'm leaning a way that is not what you might think because of what Dennis said. I'm leaning more towards, maybe there's a way to ease the parking burden for residents in the village. And this is the way to do it. So I don't want to close that door. So thank you, Dennis.
So the second on your motion was.
Me, Jacques.
Are you with that amendment? Okay. So we would be voting on this page, plus taking the X off of the shared and reconsidering that as something we want to do, continue to talk about.
For, for mixed-use development.
Okay, so.
Shared parking study.
These are the key revisions in draft zoning code. So there's valet parking there. So what did I miss?
Okay.
I do not see that as part of the discussion from the planning commission on this. I do not believe they, they spoke about valet, except with what we're going to go into at another meeting next Thursday regarding the large hotel.
Okay, because you have it here.
Hang on, let, let Rich clarify this, because I think, I think he wants to, I think he wants to clarify.
I was simply going to say that we currently have a valet provision in the existing zoning code, so that's not really new. We refined it a bit, but it's largely.
So the section that I brought up, which to me will influence valet, any potential valet program with the hotel, we will be talking about next, next week.
Yeah, we'll be returning with the zoning code discussions next Thursday, and we'll be proceeding through the chapters sequentially, and.
Because to me, this ties our hand with any valet.
And I, that's what I understood, and I agree with, you know, customer Bertrand, that I felt we were going to see that next Thursday, and it wasn't part of my motion.
Okay. Okay, so we, we're clear in your motion? Stephanie, any questions?
I'm not going to support it. I think shared parking makes sense at looking at when you have something like what's going on in 41st Avenue, where you have businesses that are open the day, businesses open at night, and you can make that kind of an analysis and, and see if that would work. But in the village, when we have 176 space deficit by the coastal commission that we already have, to exacerbate that by saying, "Well, we'll look at sharing," they're already sharing, you know? We already share everything in the village with each other, sort of.
My motion doesn't allow it. I requested that that particular part of the planning commission's.
Study.
Study, to go back to them.
They already did, they already discussed it, though.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not giving them the okay or the thumbs down. I'm just saying, can they, can they tell me, I want them to tell me, show me the opportunities for this because I don't see it. And unless I see some opportunities, you know, I don't see us putting this into the code.
Well, I don't, I don't see any opportunities at all. I mean, the village is so constrained. It is so crowded and with limited parking.
Totally understand. And again, I need, I want some rationale for that. That's all.
So this is recognizing what you're saying, Stephanie.
Yeah.
But it's just trying to get. But it's just trying to get some, a study or rationale behind if we're going to make a decision on any particular.
You know, in reality, we already have it.
Yeah, we do.
Look at, look at Margaritaville. Upstairs, residences, downstairs, they're sharing. It's a shared parking situation.
It's a mixed-use building.
In the village. So, it, we already have shared situations.
And just for clarity, we technically, right now, do not have 176 parking place shortage. We have satisfied our shortage. In fact, we have, don't take this wrong, Nels, we have a surplus of 57, okay? And it's just for the purpose of setting those aside for a large-scale hotel. But we don't have a shortfall right now today.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So, I, I think I have your motion. And it was the, all the expansions on the previous page, and, but we're going to allow shared parking studies to be considered. Is that, just, is that fair enough?
I want it to be reconsidered by the planning commission.
Reconsidered by the planning commission, okay.
Nice.
In a second. Okay. So, with that, we're going to, can I call, a roll call, please, Sue?
Councilmember Norton.
Aye.
Councilmember Harland.
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Terminy.
Aye.
Mayor Botter.
Aye. That motion carries four to one, with Councilmember Harland dissenting. And I believe, is that all we had to discuss?
I, I have a question before we close.
Hang on, let me just get.
That wraps it up. Thank you.
That wraps up your presentation. Go ahead.
Discussion has been about a parking district and also a parking trust fund, the ability to accumulate money to provide for parking. Is that something that's going to come to discussion?
So, your second question will answer first, the parking trust fund. The parking trust fund is already called out in the INLU fee policy, that that would be established. It's there. It's in policy. It would be established whenever we get revenue in from the INLU parking program, whenever that happens. Go back on your first question again?
A parking district.
The parking district, at this point, there is no process or timeline to consider a parking district in the village. A parking district in the village with a capital D would imply a tax, basically, on existing businesses to pay for additional parking. The parking district, the term that I think you heard used tonight was often referenced as kind of a term of saying, "Look, we have what we have down there. We have the parking we have, and let's think about things a little bit differently." Are you asking about sort of the parking district capital D?
No, I'm, I'm talking about the possibility of doing one. There was a time when downtown Santa Cruz had no parking districts. And they required that all businesses bought into the parking districts. It maintains parking garages. It maintains the streets and the parking, you know, maintenance of the parking. That, we talked about this for a long time, the possibility of having a district down there is.
So, my recommendation on a parking district is that, at the time when we're ready to build a parking structure, that that's, that's the time to have that conversation, I think?
Yeah.
And their comments? That this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.